January 20th of the City Council of Palo Alto to order, would Clerk call the role, please?
Councilmember Berman.
Here.
Councilmember Burt.
Here.
Councilmember DuBois.
Here.
Councilmember Philseth.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Scharf.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wolbach.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you and welcome to everyone. So our first item on tonight's agenda is a study session having to do with Palo Alto Bicycle Boulevard Program Summary. And with us we have Jaime Rodriguez from Planning and Transportation. And would you start your presentation, please? We have two items in front of us, a deck in front of us, too. So, thank you.
Thank you Mayor Holman and members of the council. Again, my name is Jaime Rodriguez. I'm the Chief Transportation Official for the City of Palo Alto. And tonight's a really exciting night for us here on the staff side. We've put a lot of work and resources into our bicycle boulevard program, really over the last four years. And for the newer councilmembers on the dais tonight, we do want to use this as an opportunity to kind of let you know kind of why we're working on the bicycle boulevard program, kind of, and the projects that we're currently having in the queue, why those exist, and kind of walk you through a brief status on all of those projects and along with some of our next steps. We also want to share with you some of the innovations that I think you'll be proud of, you know, for, to know that they started in Palo Alto, that we're beginning to change the way in which bicycling pedestrian activity is being looked at within the region. And we want to highlight some of those projects that we've implemented for you. We also want to tie those back to other projects within the city, specifically our Safe For Us to School Program, along with technology innovations that are being driven by this program. When I first joined the city in 2010, the city was in the process of beginning to update its bicycle and pedestrian transportation plan. There's a lot of reasons for why a community wants such a plan. A part of those are you have to have one to qualify for regional fund sources within the region, specifically in Santa Clara County, who, by the VTA, that's a mandate of us. We also wanted to make sure that our bicycle pedestrian transportation plan included a pedestrian element. And that's something that we've heard a lot of from the community as we've gone out to them to talk about projects in their communities. People wanted to make sure there, as we were thinking about bicycle projects, we were also thinking about pedestrians. At one point, whether you're biking or you're driving, we're all pedestrians at one point, even if it's just to go from our driveways into our homes. And that was something that we've tried to make sure that we accommodate in all of our projects, along with other modes, you know, transit uses as well. And, but the result of that bicycle pedestrian planning effort was, is the map that's here in front of you on this screen. That vision took us about two years to kind of get through, and it was a lot of community meetings, a lot of positive input, a lot of constructive criticism that resulted in this plan. And what the plan is, is really a vision of where facilities in Palo Alto should be. Of course, we could always change that as we begin to implement projects. I think that will definitely happen over the coming years. But this was our first best effort at trying to classify streets as bicycle boulevards, as streets that should have bicycle lanes, as streets that should be some sort of enhanced facility, but we didn't know what to design. And so we wanted to classify where facilities needed to be, and then when we entered into specific projects, we began to figure that out with the community. And ultimately, we come with you for what are called the approvals of concept plan lines. That's our kind of first stab at saying, you know, we think bicycle lanes look good here. We think crosswalks should be added here. You know, we think that this facility might qualify for something really radical, like a cycle track facility, where we can grade separator or buffer space bicycle and pets from automobiles. And you're going to begin to see those later on this evening as well. We have a couple dozen projects that are in the hopper today. And what this map tries to show you is where those projects are distributed throughout the community. The lines that are shown here in purple are where we are envisioning bicycle boulevards or enhanced bikeways of some type. And you'll see that we really wanted to take advantage of addressing some of the concerns that the community gave us really early on during the development of the plan, that they really wanted to see more east-west type connections. And so you see a lot of those in this map. Again, the purple lines were bicycle boulevards. Kind of the white line in the Baron Park neighborhood was just doing simple things to improve bicycle access across, in the green lines, the midtown area. We've already received a grant to potentially look at trail connections across Matadero Creek. But the community has told us, you know, they're not sold on wanting that project yet. So we're trying to identify alternatives to a Matadero Creek alignment option. And hence, the Matadero Creek Trail, Matadero Midtown project was born. And so we're going to develop more of those projects. We also have some pretty significant corridor projects along Charleston or Rastodaro Road. And, and a lot of our private sector partners identified that we needed to improve the infrastructure if we wanted to encourage their employees to ride, to work. And Google really came to the table early on during this process and funded a lot of projects in South Palo Alto. Those are the projects highlighted in orange. So just to summarize for you, the level of outreach that we've done, we've never, as a city, done the level of outreach that we've done before this project. Back in the spring, when all these projects started, we took a different perspective. We didn't want to just sit in our room with people kind of late in the evening and propose projects to them. We really wanted to kind of get the community engaged. We organized a lot of weekend bicycle ride-alongs. There was definitely some councilmembers and commissioners that participated in those processes. So thank you for being there. And we also went out to the table at the farmer's market. We knew that a lot of the community uses that as a venue to kind of get out of their homes and meet with one another in the community. So we took advantage of that and had tables for a whole month in the, in the spring to let people know about the projects, because people don't always have the time to come out to a night meeting. Of course, we did those traditional meetings as well in the evening, but we tried to give people different venues to give us their input. We've also launched online GIS interactive kind of mapping tools, where people could drop pins on a map that would came straight to us and our consultant teams to let us know whether they wanted to see improvements or provide comments on a specific project they were already designing. And we took all that input over the summer and in the fall, and we began to develop these concept plan lines that I'll walk you through shortly. And we've been refining those concept plan lines ever since. I will make it a point to let you know, we don't always get those concept plan lines right the first time. But that's okay. You know, we have this really great community outreach and engagement process in Palo Alto. And, you know, we want to throw some stuff on the wall, see what sticks with community members and the stuff that does refine that. And if something doesn't stick, we drop it off of the list. But at least we gave the community the opportunity to consider an option. Our goal in the bicycle boulevard program for this year is to have all of the concept plan lines for all of those two dozen projects brought to you for consideration. We really need that approval from the, from the council, because once we identify and approve a concept plan line, we are going to invest a lot of resources as a city to turn those into actual designs. And that's something that I just want to make sure that you understand, people at home. If we as a city want to really build out some of these facilities, we need to make that an initial investment as a community in completing those designs, because all of the grant sources that are becoming available within the community are being made for shuttle-ready projects, meaning that we have to have completed our engagement process with the community. We have to have completed those environmental studies. And we have to have plans that are ready to build, because when money's coming down the pipe from the feds and from the state, they want to see it created into jobs, not planning jobs, but construction jobs. And for anyone at home, I would encourage you, if you're not familiar with the program, to visit our project website at cityofpaloalto.org/bike. All of the community presentations, all of the notes that we've taken to the community, they're all available online for every project. So the bicycle boulevard projects that have advanced the most, that you'll be seeing later tonight, include the Maybelle Bicycle Boulevard. I won't get into too much detail this evening, because it's a specific action item for you tonight, along with the Churchill Avenue project. Charleston or Rastodaro Road is a corridor that's had a lot of committee interest in the past. And when we're talking about a project like the Maybelle Bicycle Boulevard, you can't ignore Charleston or Rastodaro Road, because they are tied together. And so although we're not here to talk about that with you tonight, we wanted to let you know that, you know, that is in the back of our mind. And we are planning to start the concept plan approval process for Charleston or Rastodaro Road in February. So in February, the Planning and Transportation Commission will see that for the very first time. And you should see that in March or April at the latest. You're also aware of our efforts as a city on bringing on a design consultant to help us build the Adobe Creek Highway 101 Bridge. We've already secured about $9 million in grant funds. So if we had a $9.5 million project, that would be a fully funded project already. And that's going to be our probably largest single project that's going to be receiving design and construction funds over the next five years. We are familiar with the, at least one more grant program coming out this spring. That's called the Active Transportation Program Project. If we have one project in Palo Alto that will qualify for that, it will be Churchill. So we're investing a lot of resources and trying to make sure that project is ready for competition this spring. I talked a little bit about that Midtown Connector project, the former Matadero Creek Trail project. We are taking each project individually and trying to make sure that we, you know, have the right tool to engage the community. We know that when it came to the Matadero Creek Trail project, there was a lot of immediate interest from people that were living along Matadero Creek in the city, potentially introducing a brand-new alignment behind their homes. And so with that specific project, we're working with the Midtown residents to develop a citizens advisory committee. We held an invitation for people to participate on that board during the winter. Our planning director will be reviewing those applications over the coming weeks. And we'll establish that CAC and use them as a method of made up of people from Midtown to help us shape information that we later bring to the community for that project, help us identify can design alternatives and the types of measures that would, that would be seen on those projects. And that's just an example of that, you know, it's not as simple as just sitting down and designing a project. We really need to engage a project in some areas in more detail. And if any one project qualifies for that, it's the Midtown Connector project. A last note that I wanted to make sure you're aware of is that earlier last, last year, the California Assembly passed Bill 1193 called Bike Ways. And in the past, it has sort of been a very difficult tedious process for the city to implement innovative kind of measures, such as, you know, green bike lanes. We've been really aggressive in deploying those types of facilities in Palo Alto. But the state recognized that, you know, a lot of communities were beginning to move in that direction, that at a state level, the design guidelines at the state weren't up to par with what communities wanted to see in their communities with the types of facilities that were already being planned and built. And so the state adopted this bill to say, you know, you don't have to go through these long testing processes anymore. If you have a project that, you know, has gone through some type of an engineering review, that an engineer such as myself can give a stamp to, an engineering stamp to, you can go ahead and implement it as long as the council in that community adopts a resolution to adopt other types of design guidelines other than the state standards. In this specific case, NACTO, the National Association of Council of Transportation Officials, has developed a completely different design policy for the pedestrian and bicycle facilities that we are going to be coming to you in the spring to ask you to adopt. You know, the reason we haven't done it yet is because we're still having those discussions at our bicycle advisory committee level. We want to make sure that we bring it to you, that they're also on board with supporting such a resolution. And so I would imagine that's something that you're going to see in the fall. But again, we are waiting. At staff level, if something makes sense to try, we're going to try it. And so what I wanted to show you here is what a typical concept plan line looks and feels like. In this specific drawing, this is a concept for Middlefield Road to extend bicycle lanes to the southern border mountain view. This is Charleston Road to the left of your screen and San Antonio to the right. What we're showing in these concept plan lines, again, that's not 100% design detail, but we're identifying in that light orange line that you might be able to make on your screen, where we need to widen the roadway. So we're trying to highlight those types of very significant capital improvements and potentially real estate improvements. You know, we're identifying capacity improvements at the Coverly and Moncho's. We definitely want to add left turn lanes into those facilities, because we've heard a lot of concerns from people that they have a hard time getting into Coverly. And that left turn can be difficult without, without those facilities. We are also looking at a concept of not trying to take away parking, because parking is such a precious item in people's lives. And so this concept along the portions along the Coverly frontage and Charleston Plaza, we don't want to take away parking, but we can't add bike lanes without doing something. And so this concept here, we're proposing to preserve two lanes southbound exiting Palo Alto. But after you enter, maybe going down to one lane to add those bike lanes in and add in those left turn lanes. So that's again, just a concept at this stage. We're looking at areas where we want to highlight, you know, green bicycling facilities to really identify conflict zones where bicyclists and automobiles are merging with one another. And so that's what's shown up on the top near Charleston Road. And you may notice that we're trying to channelize traffic into the Coverly Center as well as Charleston Plaza. And that's what's happening towards that bottom portion of the screen. So we show a lot of detail in these plans, not 100% engineering detail, but enough for the people and for policymakers such as yourself to understand what we're trying to implement. And then if you all eventually approve these types of concepts, we're going to invest hundreds of thousands of dollars to turn these into true design plans that are shovel-ready for future grant competition. This, of course, all ties back to schools in Palo Alto. I've always said that you can't talk about the bike program and the schools as separate programs, because anything we do in the bicycle program is to support our Safe For Us to School program. And it's the Safe For Us to School program that drives the need for change as part of our bicycle boulevard programs. It's a constant cycle. It's part of that implementation. About two years ago, we started a really aggressive effort to develop these, what we call walk and roll maps for Palo Alto. And we did it for every school in Palo Alto. And this is what we use to prioritize which bicycle boulevard projects we move forward first. Some of the things that we've been deploying in Palo Alto, and that I wanted to make sure that you, the newer councilmembers are aware of, is Palo Alto has more experimental material types of bike materials than any other city in the region. We've constantly invite vendors to come to us, or they automatically just come to us. And they've proposed to us which their newer products, and we don't know what to use, because the industry is constantly introducing new products. They're, eventually will get cheaper. Some have benefits in installation costs, others have benefits in lifecycle costs. And so we wanted to identify corridors we could deploy these facilities. And we have people from all over California, and at times we have people from different parts of the world coming to Palo Alto to see these new facilities. We've deployed our traditional greenback sharrows up on the top left, you know, in a kind of more of a lime color, which is really now the industry standard. And we started doing greenback sharrows a couple of years ago with darker green colors on Channing Avenue. We've done green bike lanes on the bottom left approaching Alma Street with a slurry-type material, very similar to what you see on the top of roadway surface already. And down at the bottom, we did the first experimental glass beads in the country as well. And so we're trying to figure out those lifecycle benefit costs of different materials, so that when we were designing projects, we picked up materials that will give us our longest cost-benefit impact. We've also done a lot of simple things, but again, that really stood out. We've been a leader in the design deployment of bicycle corral parking around the region. We've done some of the first bicycle traffic signal facilities at Alma Litton. And we've deployed buffered, or in this case, you know, separated by the median barrier, the contraflow bike at Alma. So again, really simple examples of things that we're doing. But these are really important to us, because when we go to the community and we talk about a potential benefit or improvement in their community, you don't, we don't have to show them a picture. We can say, hey, just drive out to downtown and go to this quarter, and you'll see it. Hey, go out to Midtown, drive down Calpoling, and you'll see this facility. And, and to be honest with you, a lot of people have done that after we've had these community meetings. And it meant a lot for them to be able to just drive within their community to get a flavor of what the options they have for their projects. The other piece that I wanted you to note is that not everything is an engineering capital improvement. A lot of times, the programmatic work that we do in education is much more effective than what we can actually build on the roadway. And we've been trying to take a national approach in making sure that there's consistency in the messages that we tell bicyclists at various ages, how they need to behave on the roadway versus motorists, how to interpret the things that they're seeing on the roadway that may be new light green bike lanes. And we've been partnering with the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition to develop these ads that you may have began to see in the Palo Alto Weekly where we run them. But every community, a country, cities down in the east coast, Santa Cruz is one of the first adopters. They're taking all of our ads, taking off our name, putting on their name, and re-advertising these materials within their community. So, you know, I take a lot of pride, I think that our city should, in that we're leading the development of the education materials that the community is beginning to see. When it comes to evaluation, I know a lot of you have seen some of these graphics that are on the bottom right that show the level of bicycle activity that are happening at the school level. But where we lack as a community, and it's because of a lack of technology in the industry, we don't have good ways to really track bicycle pedestrian activity within our community. You know, we're really limited to paying people to literally sit out at an intersection and count bicyclists and count pedestrians, and at times, count cars. And one of the things that we've been driving is the development of new technology. So what we're showing on the left here is a brand-new bicycle and pedestrian video-based counter that we think will be very cost-effective for deployment around the city. And we have a $100,000 grant that we got three years ago that we hadn't been able to spend, because technology did not exist. But, you know, we're in Palo Alto where technology drives change with the rest of the world. And so we're working with different companies here in Palo Alto to deploy this specific technology. This is a product from Biomac Technologies. They're going to look at a bike-pet counter that we can deploy and count traffic out here along the Bryant Street frontage of City Hall. And those count stations will be deployed at all of the schools, so that we get to track, you know, what's happening on a seasonal basis regarding bike and pet activity. And in this first phase, it will be just automobile, it'll just be bikes and pets. But in the next software versions of these products, we'll also begin to establish vehicle count stations around the city. And that's data that we've always lacked as a city, and a lot of cities lack that type of data. So these new count stations will be a Palo Alto innovation that I think we'll be getting to see in a lot more communities in the union. So with that, I just wanted to kind of let you know where we are in our next steps. This year, this calendar year, all of the 24 concept plan line projects will be coming to you for approval. And we're going to start that tonight with the Maybelle and Churchill project. Churchill is already funded through design, so that's something that will move forward right with your approval. But Maybelle doesn't have design funding yet. So assuming that we get approval tonight, we're going to come back to you sometime this early spring for a request to actually extend a design contract to people that have already started a project here and finalize that concept plan line. Although I will say, I don't think we can do 24 design projects at once. You know, one of the things that we identified over the last year is that it was a lot of work for staff, but we can handle that. That's what we're paid to do. We're happy to do that. We're happy to have the work. But it was a lot of impact on the community. There was a lot of design fatigue by residents saying, you know, I was just here, you know, last week, and now I got to be at this other part of town for a different meeting. And I think that it would be too much for us to ask the community to continue to do that, along with all of the other projects the city has in play. And so what I hope happens over the summer and in the fall is that we pick a few key corridor projects to move forward. And I think Greer Road is a great project to, for the city to consider advancing into a bicycle boulevard design phase. There isn't too many bicycle boulevard facilities in that, what I might call the eastern part of the core part of town. Within the Baron Park neighborhood, we are hearing a lot more concerns from people that they feel like they lack safe facilities to walk as pedestrians. And I think that we need to continue to work with the Baron Park neighborhood to figure out how we can be respectful of their design guidelines to maintain that rural environment that they enjoy in that community, but at the same time, that can support the level, the high level of pedestrian activity they're seeing because of all the student growth in that part of town with Gunn and Turman. And so Baron Park would be a wonderful project for us to continue moving forward into a design phase. In South Palo Alto, I think that that's a prime location for us to take advantage of our private sector partners to take projects, move them into a design phase. I think we can do a lot of good along San Antonio Road, along the connections to the Nito Future Google Campus at the San Antonio Station, and as well as provide good strong connections to the projects that are already existing, meaning the projects that are tying to Charleston or Rastodaro Road. In the, in the kind of northern part of Palo Alto, again, we've got some great facilities with the Bryant Street facility already, but we have to take care of east-west connections. So I think that Homer Channing Enhanced Bike is going to be a really quick design project that we can move forward. That's another project that I hope the city can begin to implement this coming summer and fall. So with that, that's our, our update. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you for that. And I was about to say, you must have done a perfect job, because there hadn't been any lights and no cars in the public. But Councilmember Niss.
Thank you Jaime very much. A couple of things pop up right away. I'll just put Bryant Street on the back burner for a minute. But talk about the glass beads, since there has been such a discussion about those that are used on California Avenue. Are they the same? Are they different? Is somebody going to say, my tire went flat because I hit one of the glass beads?
Thank you, Councilmember Niss. We aren't using glass beads on California. On California, we used what's called a preformed thermoplastic.
No, I'm talking about the sidewalk, where they maintain that the glass is embedded into the sidewalk itself.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
No, those are completely different things. I mean, so.
So one is glass beads and the other is glass something or others?
Yeah, I mean, there are some glass particulates, but I think Jaime was pointing out that we had this test project with this glass bead sort of.
So there are no sharp edges? That's all I want to know?
No, 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 no.
Okay, nothing sharp.
It's in the roadway.
Somehow glass sort of, you know, waves that, that red flag out there. Talking about Churchill, and I didn't hear you mention this, but I know that there are states that advertise slow and go. And you might want to talk a little about that. And I also understand from talking with our police that, because that, that is such a heavily-used area in the morning, 7:30 to 8:30 or so, that when the bikes are riding together as a continuous stream, and they don't stop, the understanding is that it is probably better to allow that to happen than it is to insist that everyone stop. So although you are not involved in that aspect of it, you're involved in the bike pathway, the bike where it will go. Could you comment on those, or have you talked with anyone about that? Because there's a lot of discussion in our community about bikes and bikers, and bikes who don't stop at stop signs. And people like the city manager, who occasionally has a run-in with a vehicle. There are, you know, it's a true story. And, and I think those of us, again, I avoid certain streets in the morning wisely. I would never go down North California after 7:30 in the morning until about nine o'clock. And, and I'm delighted with that. I, I think it's fabulous that, that we have so many people biking. But I do think that as, as the biking has intensified, it also has intensified a number of other issues that come up around biking. So for, for additional comments, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Niss. I think the heart of that question there is, is that, you know, we recognize for sure, and we hear it all the time, that bicyclists don't always obey stops. And what we have found is that when there's that kind of critical mass of bicyclists that are kind of commuting to school in the morning, you know, if one kid doesn't stop, the 50 kids behind them don't stop either. And, and we get a lot of phone calls from motorists like, gosh darn it, those bikes don't stop. You got to do something, get out there and enforce. And, and we do enforce, for sure. Our police department does issue citations to bicyclists that don't stop. But, you know, in our conversations with the police department, they do recognize that it's actually more of an unsafe situation if they try to stop, you know, a big mass of bicyclists that are traveling down a certain queue. And so, you know, what we do with PD is we basically say like, hey, where are the corridors where we probably like, should lax a little bit of the enforcement, because it would cause a ripple impact to automobiles if we tried to make everybody stop. And so, you know, what we typically say is, we always tell people, if you're on your bike and you come to a stop sign, you should stop. We teach that in partnership with the school district as part of the curriculum that we teach in the classroom. And so we, we should not probably stray from that message in the near term, unless there's a significant change in state law. But at the same time, we recognize that enforcement, you know, needs to allow that movement to happen. It would be a worse scenario if we didn't. And so we take things on a case-by-case basis. And a lot of residents do exactly what you do, Councilmember Niss. They know what streets to avoid by time of day.
So now let me address Bryant Street. So why don't we talk in general about, and I noticed that there are letters here that discuss the color, and there are those who do not want any indication on their street by color or whatever else. And I began getting leaf-litted at my house because of what was proposed for Bryant Street. So I, I think this is the time to air that and talk about what next steps might be and so forth.
Thank you, Councilmember Niss. And for the rest of the councilmembers, I may not have read any of the emails from the people at home. You know, we took a pretty typical approach at the beginning of the bicycle boulevard program with this first round of concept plan lines. And we really thought there was going to be a lot of value in consistency in the looking field of bicycle boulevards around town that, you know, if we're going to say that we, we want to use greenback sharrows, that image that I highlighted for you previously, if we want to use that as, as a mechanism to kind of guide bicyclists of where to place themselves on the roadway and remind motorists that that's a space that they're sharing with the bicyclists, that we propose the same looking field of greenback sharrows around town. That's a really great example of something that did not go over well in all communities in Palo Alto. But again, that's okay. You know, we heard from a lot of people along certain parts of Bryant Street, specifically in the old Palo Alto part of that corridor, that they didn't want greenback sharrows. And that was actually a really positive criticism for us as city staff, because we don't want to propose and shove projects down any community. You know, we want those communities to be partnered with us and be excited about the deployment of these projects. And so, you know, with the greenback sharrows on Bryant Street through all Palo Alto, we've already removed them from the project. It is a good example of a corridor that's got some pretty good traffic coming already, that, you know, residents recognize was really a positive change that happened years ago. You know, if it's not broken, don't fix it. Not that that doesn't mean that there's always room for some improvement, you know, but greenback sharrows specifically, you know, we started out proposing those on all the corridors, and then we've been pulling them back as we've been getting feedback from residents in their neighborhoods. And through all Palo Alto, they're not there anymore.
Okay.
Okay, I, I really appreciate that. And it's always an interesting juxtaposition as you put the bikes with the cars with the pedestrians and so forth. And I really appreciate what the school district does. I know that they've done a terrific job. I particularly call out Penny Elson, who has, you know, devoted many years to this. But at the same time, I hope we have awareness of all those three groups as to what good protocol would be, and I don't know what others of my council do, but I have certainly learned to avoid certain areas and probably helps with the blood pressure, to be quite honest. Anyhow, thanks, Jaime.
Thank you.
Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Schmidt.
Yeah, I enjoyed the report and the presentation tonight. It's, it's great to have a full background on where we stand, on how you envision the future, and a whole range of projects that are underway. I like you have the 10-step plan, so each one of the projects might be in a very different position, but at least this gives us a chance to, to look across the spectrum. I think that's great. Another important thing, I guess it's added on to the point you were just discussing about putting markings around town. You know, the downside is that some neighborhoods say, "I don't want those big things out front of my house." But on the other hand, I think it's had the benefits of making everybody in town aware of a growing number of bicyclists. And as they drive around town at any time of day, they become aware of which intersections might be places where they should pay attention. And I think that part of education is, is very important and pays off. But I guess there should be a sensitivity to how, how much you want to draw on the The other thing I think is really important is the integration of bike and pedestrian plan with the infrastructure program that has funding momentum. And by getting the, the bike plan as a key part of the infrastructure, there is a long-term funding source that becomes available. So I think it, it fits very well together. Just a couple comments on data and things that are there or not there. The report has a couple places where you say, gee, we're really increasing numbers, but I read through the whole report and there were no numbers. Now, you explained in your presentation that technology is finally catching up and that we can look forward over the coming year to begin getting counts at various times of day in various places of not just autos, but bikes and pedestrian counts. And look forward to that type of information being made available. It's, it will be nice, I guess, as we go through the design cycles with each one of these, we have some sense of how much of an impact the boulevards and so on can make in utilization. One thing that struck me is this is a bike and pedestrian plan, and yet I don't see a lot of pedestrian in it. There are some street crossings, or you mentioned, but in some parts of town, walkers and joggers at various times of day are much more significant, many more of them out. And the question is, are there elements of our bike pedestrian plan that should be reflective of their needs? I think of a couple things. In Mountain View, I noticed that there are bike routes, which are usually paved, have on the side a six-inch, 12-inch place for joggers to move along, and they are very heavily used. And I don't see any of that awareness in here of the fact that bikers and joggers might share but have complementary needs on bike paths and so on as we go on. There is an issue, I guess I have noticed, that as you become more aware of bicyclists, especially on dark winter days, the real problem is joggers, who you, you come to a stop sign and you can stop for pedestrians who are at the corner, but a jogger who's 15 feet, 20 feet, coming out of the dark, what are, what are the rules of the game? And I have found myself scratching my head sometimes about what happens at a stop sign, stopped intersection with a jogger who's away from there but moving in the dark. So just a couple issues. I think there are elements of joggers and walkers in town, and I don't know how you reach out to them. As you say, sometimes your website is identified as paloalto.org/bike. But as I say, I think in some neighborhoods of town, there are more joggers out than bikers at various times of day. The last thing is the map. We have several versions of this big general map, and, you know, it's very, contains a lot of information. And as a matter of fact, I have found it overwhelming. I counted 19 different types of lines on there. And when you have a map of the whole city to try and identify which of the 19 you're at is, is somewhat difficult. I tried to use this map to take a look at the two areas we're going to have a discussion later on, and I had a very hard time first finding them and then identifying why these two. Yes, the map you just turned to is much more involving, enticing, and clear of, you know, here's where we are now. So maybe I suggest that, you know, rather than this map as the background map for things to have either, you know, here's where we are, here's what we're working on, here's our vision of the long-term, separate maps for each of those, where here's what we have accomplished. I think that would be much easier to absorb. The maps for the walk and roll to schools are so clear and easy to work with. It's, you know, a good model. So my comments, but thank you very much.
Thank you. And if anyone on the, in the public would like to submit a card, this would be a good time to do that. Councilmember DuBois.
So you said other cities are using our ad designs. Seems like a good revenue opportunity there. Should be charging royalties. So thank you a lot. I really appreciate the community outreach. I know you've done quite a bit of it. I, I made the Matador Creek meeting, which I think was one of the earlier ones. I tried to go to another one, but I had the date wrong in my calendar, but thank you for that. And I know you've said us quite a lot, but hopefully you can keep that up. So I think, I just want to emphasize the point that wasn't great made, I think, about being sensitive to context. And, you know, Old Palo Alto brought up the issue with sharrows on Bryant Street. I think Bryant Street's a great example. It's closed to through traffic in a lot of places. I don't know if you've heard from people in midtown. I could see them not wanting them within those roads that are closed to through traffic. So I understand the idea of kind of branding and consistency, but I think being sensitive to the context is really important. So I'd ask you to consider no sharrows on Bryant Street where it's closed to cars anyways. How do you determine how many signs to use and where to put them? Was it primarily based on this being consistent and applying them consistently?
Thank you, Councilmember DuBois. It really varies by corridor. I mean, at this level of concept planning, we're not trying to say where every sign will be. That'll, that'll happen in a later design phase. But it, a lot of it is, at the same time of the route, that we want to clean things up. We don't want to have sign clutter on the street. We don't want to impact the looking field of a neighborhood. And so when we're going through this design process, we're actually going to consolidate signs, move signs from one location, kind of put them in an area where they are more visible to motorists. So that cleanup work will happen in the design phase of a project.
Yeah. And I, I know you renamed the Matador Creek project. What's the current status of that?
The, the CAC applications just came into us last week. So by next week, our planning director, Hillary Gittleman, will be reviewing the applications that we recommend as staff for people to join the CAC. And the very first thing we'll do is actually pull the CAC together sometime in February and to begin to kind of educate them on the projects more, more of the background. But really, we, we need to get this project moving. We have some potential construction dollars that are out there. That's not the only reason to do the project, of course, you know, but we haven't really engaged the, the community beyond the two meetings that we had in the past that you, that you referenced. And we want to get that project back on track. And we're hoping that the CAC can help us kind of shape presentations, shape information that we share with the community so that when we do take it back, it's a little bit more easier, let's just be honest, easier to swallow for people because in the past we've gone to them on the Creek show specifically. It's, those have not been fun meetings to try and manage because there's a lot of, a lot of passion around that project. And so we're hoping that the CAC will help us, you know, kind of calm down some of the residents, but let it then be advocates for the projects as well.
So it's kind of a bigger discussion, but, you know, I think we do need to balance the needs of cars and bikes, and this is the bike plan, but in some places, I think we need to consider the needs of the drivers as well. And, you know, I think there's a perception out there that we're worsening traffic on purpose, and that's not really helpful, you know, when we have traffic problems. And I'm not saying that's true, but I think that perception is out there. So a couple of comments along those lines. You showed the concept plan for Middlefield on there, but I don't even see Middlefield on your bikeway map. And, you know, there's some notes on here that say, we're talking about Bryant Street, cut through Copper Lay and also Ross Road, which again, think about cars and bikes. Ross, Ross Road and Bryant make a lot of sense to me to keep the bikes there and not necessarily on a street like Middlefield. So I don't really have a question there, more of a comment, but, I mean, is Middlefield, I guess, part of this plan?
Thank you, Councilmember DuBois. Yes, so definitely, you know, closing gaps and extending bike lanes on a quarter where they exist, but kind of stop somewhere like, like the example of Middlefield Road. You know, so it is on the plan to extend those bike lanes out into Mountain View. And we, we've actually pushed Mountain View to do the same thing on Charleston Road as well as Middlefield Road. And so we do want to close the gap and put that bike lane on that facility, and that's what we're going to do. You're right, though, this is not just a bike project, it's also a PED project, it's a transit opportunity, and it's an auto project. I know a lot of you are familiar with kind of stuff like, I've been called every name in the book, you know, the anti-traffic car guy, you know, everything. But, you know, at the same time, we're at these meetings and, and I'm working with the different committees, like the Bicycle Advisory Committee, I'm the biggest guy pushing against a full bike project and trying to balance the needs. And so we definitely do our best, you know, we struggle and we're going to get better over time, but we really do take all perspectives into consideration. I want to make sure that, that you and people at home do recognize that, you know, and when you see the concept plan lines tonight, you're going to see where we're adding roadway capacity for automobiles. And so there is a good balance in all the projects, and, and hopefully you'll, you'll agree when you see these concept plan lines.
Right. I mean, I don't think legally we can keep bikes off of streets, but, you know, I, you know, I see a bicyclist on Alma, and I know Bryant Street's two blocks away, and it's just very dangerous, right? And so there are certain streets like that, Alma, Middlefield, El Camino, Oregon Expressway, that if there was a way, designate those as primarily cars. And I think we have a lot of parallel bike boulevards around those streets and trying to make sure people know that they're there and not going on those really dangerous streets. I mean, is that, do you look at it that way? There's streets primarily for cars and?
For sure, Councilmember DuBois. And you're, you're bringing up a good point that I stress at every meeting, that each one of these projects is a great project, but it's the projects together creating the network that really create a game changer for our community. The fact that we're creating this amazing option that people can, can, that knows out there to travel around the city, that's the big benefit for the community. And so, you know, when we see people on, on Alma, I want to stop my car and say, "What are you doing? Go over one block to park, and that's your best place to bike." You know, but, but part of the issue is that we don't have that really strong signage network yet. That's something that we've been implementing in pieces. And on all these projects, I just want to note that, you know, if that's an obvious fix, you know, we're not going to wait a year to go through a concept plan and a design phase and a construction phase. If it's a simple fix, we're going to do it right now. We have been, and we'll continue to do that. But the signage network is a big piece of this, but we can't sign it until the facility is there. And there is some improvements that we have to make. And so a lot of these concept plan lines that you can just be seeing tonight is that first step in trying to build some consensus at a policy level, let us, let us get these things moving. You know, we'll do perfection over time, but right now progress is what's most important.
Just two more quick ones. So I do see a little section of Alma on the current plan, and again, I just have concerns about, I think Alma's one of our major thorough, thoroughfares, and if there was a way to move that part of the bike plan over to a, a less busy street, that would, that would be good. And then I'm really interested, I'd like to get more information on your PED bike counting technology. I'm really interested in that. And I also really interested in using kind of new technologies to measure vehicle, vehicle traffic. And I'd really like to see us have some technology that measures cut-through traffic in a lot more places than just the major intersections, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. I just wanted to know, I mean, a lot of these things will build on one another. So you're, we're talking about technology that you're seeing for the first time with bike and PED counters. Our vision, you know, the vision that, that we've been trying to build towards is taking something that looks completely independent like a bike PED project, but tying it to something completely different, like the Traffic Signal Program. So we, we're already kind of got in place the different vendors on the technology side, knowing that, hey, you've got to work with this other private company that has a really good solution and make sure that you can talk to it because our vision is anything that we do has to be open data source. The data that we can collect, we want to push it online, you know, and the, the big connection, the big benefit is that's going to then go to the Microsoft sync technologies. It's going to go to SAP, it's going to go to Tesla. You're getting that information into a connected vehicle, that's a different world. And, and all of these things that we're doing, we're changing the world in Palo Alto, and that's something that, you know, it, it sounds way out there, but it is true. No one else is doing these things. Tying something that's a bike, simple bike PED project to a traffic signal project that ties it to a connected vehicle, that's something that we're doing. And so we really need your support. We need the community's support to begin to move some of these things forward.
Yeah, that sounds really cool. Thank you.
Councilmember Wolbach.
Thank you very much for the report. My first question is regarding experiments and experimental efforts. You know, the idea is you go from an experiment to collecting the data from the experiment to then implementing en masse if it's successful. Sharrows are still described, from what I've seen in your report, as experimental. Do we have the data to say that they're ready for primetime and we want to keep, or we want to expand their use, you know, throughout the city? Or should we be still collecting more data before we start implementing them, before we even get to the debate about whether they're greenbacked or not, or whether they're going to be in this city or that, or this neighborhood or that neighborhood? Because I'll be honest, I think that consistency across the city is important. I also think that context is important, and so before we get into that debate, I want to make sure that we've got good data to support the idea that these are the, you know, the right answer.
Thank you, Councilmember Wolbach. You know, a lot of these newer kind of tools like sharrows, you know, which aren't experimental, sharrows are okay. It's greenbacked sharrows that are different. And so, you know, you know, we're, we're trying to take a really strong common sense approach, you know. So if, if, you know, if sharebacked shero is already an approved traffic control device, which it is, you know, if it's got greenback to it, you know, that's, that's not something that, you know, that me personally, as your chief transportation official, wanted to spend a year's worth of analysis on. You know, if it made sense for the community, we've just started deploying it, and a lot of communities did that. And that's why the state passed that assembly bill that, you know, if we have an engineer that's willing to take responsibility for implementing, which I've done for our community, you know, and been implementing them, as long as we have a resolution that adopts us, adopts for this, for the city, non-traditional California Design Standard policies, we can begin to implement those, and that's what we're doing. And so again, you haven't adopted that resolution because we're still working on that at our payback level, but you will see that this spring. And, you know, there are some projects where we should participate in an experimental process and a lot of these things like cycle tracks that you'll see on, on other projects, that'd be one that I'd say we should take a national lead and begin to participate in those processes, but we have to agree that we want to build them first, and then we have to build them. And the other part is like, what does that looking field of what you build as an interim kind of stage look like versus what does it look like as a, as a final product? And so there's, that's something that we'll have to figure out through these next design phases.
Okay, thank you. Something else, you know, just to, to think about moving forward. Also on commuting, a couple parts to this. One, Also on commuting, a couple of parts to this. One, looks like Boulder, Colorado, has almost 3% more use of bicycle as a share of their commute with, was 11.1% versus 8.4% of workers commuting in Boulder versus Palo Alto. What are they doing? I mean, we could probably spend a whole study session on that, but do you have like a, you know, a very top-level line about what Boulder's doing that we could consider emulating?
So I'm going to try and be really sensitive here, but who cares what Boulder's doing? I mean, it matters what is right for Palo Alto. And that's the perspective that we try to take. We definitely, they've done a lot of great things that, you know, we should learn from, you know, but we don't want to be Boulder. You know, Boulder wants to be Palo Alto. Everybody else here wants to be Palo Alto. So let's figure out what makes sense for our community. Let's figure out where, what community is okay with the green-backed Shareo. Let's agree to put it on the street. So again, I don't want to compare ourselves to other cities. I'd rather let everybody else compare themselves to us. And let's just, let's just do what's right for us.
All right. Well, I'm going to put this nicely, but I care what Boulder's doing because, you know, and obviously, you know, we're teasing each other, but you put in the comparisons to other cities to highlight that we are, you know, number two in, in the country, right? You know, so we're on the right track. But I definitely encourage, you know, all of the council, all of the staff, to pay attention to what's happening while other places. We don't need to reinvent the wheel on everything in Palo Alto. And if something's working great in Amsterdam, or something's working great in Boulder, let's at least discuss whether any of that can be translated to Palo Alto. Sometimes it'll work, sometimes it won't. Again, as Councilmember DuBois said, you know, we want to be context-sensitive. And I don't know if you can just give me like a one-liner and just, you know, remind us all, especially in the context of you're talking about the bike plan and the schools and safe routes to schools as being almost synonymous or being closely tied together. But continuing on the theme of commuting, how important is and how central is massively increasing bike use for adults, for work in our bike and pedestrian plan?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, first.
No, I was just going to alert you the fact that I'm Boulder City Mayor. As a friend of mine, I'm sure I'll be hearing from her this week.
Thank you, Councilmember Wolbach. You know, again, when it comes to the school program, I mean, it varies by school for us. Some of the schools, we see 60% just bicycler ridership. On average, we're seeing probably closer to 40, 45, and most of our schools across the board at the high school level, that's kind of what we're seeing. So I mean, when you take a school, like, let's just say, Palley, and I don't know the number, let's just say there was 1,000 people, and if 45% of those 450 kids are biking to school, which is what we're seeing, that's 450 cars that are not on the roadway. And it's a balance for us. You know, I was having a conversation just before the council meeting started with some of the residents in the audience and talking to me about, you know, traffic on Rashtidura Road. And, you know, these are all balances, you know. You know, I would rather sacrifice someone's commute for two minutes, but make sure that pedestrians and bicyclists, student-aged pedestrians and bicyclists can safely cross the street. And so we're going to, we're going to implement things on a balanced perspective. That's definitely kind of where we struggle, it's where I struggle, you know, but we'll, we're going to collect data, share that information. And when you ultimately see projects, hopefully they're balanced.
Well, perhaps I could clarify. My question was less about balancing driving commute versus students biking to school. The question is more about how important and how can we strengthen the importance of biking to work as a parallel component to biking to school as part of our plan looking to the future?
I think that a way to strengthen it on the commute perspective is as, as private sector projects are coming in for you to review, I think that we really need to be a leader in implementing more transportation demand-type strategies. I think that with the implementation or development of our new kind of TMA in the city, that's a really good opportunity for the city to kind of take a lead and change the way in which, you know, people look at their projects when they're building them. You know, we're, we're the only city in the entire Bay Area that tells a developer, if they're building your Caltrain, you have to have GO passes for everybody that's going to work in this building. It surprises me that we're the only city that does that, you know. But that's a step one to make sure that, okay, they're going to get to Caltrain. Hopefully, they get there on a bike, you know. And the things that we're doing is, you know, we're making sure kids want to bike to school. They're wanting to bike with their friends. You know, if you get your kids to bike, they're going to make you bike. And that, that's, that's the snowball effect that we've seen in our community. And it's where, you know, people like Kathy Durham and Penny Ennison and Allison have done a great job because, you know, once you get your kids to bike, you're going to be forced to bike. And that change of perspective and mind thought is going to change. And those kids as kids, 15, 20 years from now, they're going to be teaching that same kind of mindset to their kids. And so I say it again, you know, a lot of things are starting in Palo Alto, and it's changing the way the rest of the country, we can still look at things.
May I just add something, Councilmember Wolbach? I think there's a theme here, excuse me, from the different council members' comments that speak to, I mean, Jaime's been talking about the planning and the design piece, and then he's talked about the programmatic piece, but there's this, this other component that's embedded here beyond just the outreach, which is, how is it that we communicate and imprint the network as it evolves in a way that users know how to use it? Whether that's, and we've talked about signage earlier when we were having some discussions about integrating our shuttle system and other TDM-related things. Are there technology uses and those sorts of things that can be done? Greg's comment that, you know, it's pretty complicated to look at the map and get a sense of where things are. And those of us who've done either some of the bike rides that we've, we've staged with the schools, or do it ourselves, you actually do have to ride these routes. You have to start riding these routes and be able to test them out to make them suddenly become something that people start to change their behavior and look at how that they could, they could commute. So I think we have a whole public communications campaign too that, you know, isn't as nearly as developed as it needs to be as we bring these, these on. And then going back to your other questions, I mean, about Boulder, I mean, for example, I mean, all the, all the type bike, top bike to commute cities for the most part are college towns. And so the makeup of, you know, both the scale of a college town and where the jobs are and those things, probably, I think we could explain the differential between job location and some of those things in Boulder, between Boulder and Palo Alto, pretty easily. In the top four bicycle friend, platinum-level bicycle-friendly cities, with the exception of Portland, are all under Boulder, Davis, and Fort Collins, Colorado. So, I mean, we are, we have a, we're pursuing them. We met with these folks last spring. We were talking about what is, you know, we're just on the cusp of being able to move into that, that arena. And I would say that that's really important for us to both learn from others and see what we need to do. But this conversation's been going on certainly for the past five years, right? We've got the spandex crowd, you know, we've increasingly have the student crowd. But, you know, how do we get the moms and the commuters and that in a way that really works? And I'm sure, looking at Councilmember Burt, we've been having some conversations about activating this oneself. I'm sure some of you will have some ideas about how we start to advance that. And then the last thing I just would say, and I was more kind of question I put out there for Jaime and everyone, which is, how is it that when we're building a network, we suddenly start to hit some milestone points where we start to go, wow, the network really is clicking in now. And we understand that, and we are able to communicate it to people in ways that they really start to catch, get it. Because it's going to be whatever it is, five, 10-year period of time that we're going to be deploying this. And as at some point, we hit these sort of tipping point thresholds where we get these big boosts in ridership. And I think it would be very helpful for us to know strategically, you know, how and when those sorts of things can happen. So thanks.
So we have three more members of the council who'd like to speak, and I have a couple of comments myself. We are at five after seven, so I would ask colleagues to be concise and direct in your comments and questions, if you would please. And we have one member of the public who wants to speak. Councilmember Burt.
Thank you. So quickly, just to put the Boulder thing aside for a moment, if you think about it, they're a college town, we're a college town, but our college doesn't count. So Stanford is not incorporated, is not in our data, theirs is. On the other hand, they are hillier, and their high tomorrow is scheduled to be 28 and snow. And that counts. So we're flat with great climate. We really should be a much more bike-friendly community. Better comparison.
500 feet elevation.
Yeah, that's right. You get used to that, though. Good comparison is Copenhagen, which is about 50% bike commute. They're, now they're, for whatever reason, they're only, they're scheduled to get all the way up to 35 tomorrow. And they have 50%. If we got 20% mode shift on our bike commute, we would have a drastic impact on our traffic and parking in this community. It would have a huge impact. I don't want to speculate the degree, but I actually want to pose this as one of our metrics going forward is what sorts of favorable impacts on traffic and parking will we have based on given milestones in mode shift. And I think it's enormous. Just in you look at our downtown parking issue, if you got several hundred more people out of many thousands of people who work downtown, several hundred more to ride their cars, we would have, you know, if we had 300 on average out of here, that's, that's $20 million in cost avoidance for building new garages. And we literally are looking at spending those kinds of dollars to build new garages. So there's a great benefit there for all the community, not just bike riders. Just also, I think it's important that we lay a little bit of history out in our bike plan. And as I see it, we've had three major phases in our community. No, actually more than that. So there was the, my mother lived here during World War II, and there was gas rationing. And she bragged to my father years later about just everybody in Palo Alto either rode their bikes or took the Big Green Monster Shuttle Bus, as it was called at the time. And it was, but we had more biking here in that period than elsewhere for the same sorts of reasons. Great climate, flat land, good streets for it. And then we had a phase that was in the mid-'60s through the '70s, which was kind of a golden era of Palo Alto leading, leading the country in that whole movement toward biking in the community. And Alan Fletcher was a leader, and many others. And those were big issues in this community, as we literally have today places that we take for granted where we don't have parking on one side of the street, so that we have bike lanes. That wasn't always the case. So these sorts of issues we've had. Then we had a, an era over the last 20 years, which, as you mentioned, was this massive success in our safe routes to schools, where we had, what have we had? I forget Penny's here, but hopefully she'll cite the numbers. But a huge increase in our school age population and virtually no increase and maybe a decrease in cars that actually drove to schools. If we, we didn't have that program, our commute hour from schooled commutes would be absolute gridlock. And it was becoming so in the mid and late '90s. And, and now we're hitting this next phase right now. And this, this will be a real milestone in history of our community. And frankly, with the problems we have with traffic, this is one of the essential ways for us to have a high quality of life in our community in the future. So I also want to just state that having observed for 20 years, what we were able to accomplish in progress in biking and other transportation in our community versus what we're accomplishing right now is an incredible difference. And I think Jaime and others who support him deserve a great deal of credit for being extremely productive. This is, I'll just say it's hyperproductive. And now, change can be a struggle, and, and not everybody is comfortable with it. And not all changes that we think may be good in one direction are good for everybody without trade-offs. And I do think that, that as Jaime has, I think, learned and acknowledged tonight, we have to really listen to the community. And it doesn't mean listening translates into us giving up. It means we respond to what we hear in the community, try to find solutions. Sometimes we have to simply back away from some things that might be best for biking and aren't acceptable to some neighborhoods. Other times, we can actually find solutions that, that overcome the problems. I'm glad to hear that the Matador conversations going forward because one of the things that we really do lack are off-road biking corridors and paths. And this was one of the few opportunities. I recognize it does have challenges, and it's going to have to go forward in a sensitive way. But I think this is tremendously important. Councilmember DuBois was talking about how do we keep, you know, cars and bikes separated on our busiest streets? Well, one of the ways is we have a great parallel path to Alma on the other side of the tracks, and it's going to extend into a park, which is, like Bryant, has vehicular constraints that make it a safe bike route and a low traffic volume. But this one has tremendous opportunity. And I think we need to really work at solving the problems rather than giving up on them there. I will say on the map, I, I put on reading glasses that I don't use all the time and still struggled some with it. I think it's great to have everything on a single page. Even 11 by 18 is helpful, but I'd break it up and I'd use the borders because people really will value this. And we just have to make it readable. The other thing is that the definitions of the different classes of bike lanes and things, I know that we got a great description of the various projects on the back. Maybe one of the pages is the definitions, or, and we keep making those so people actually know what this, what they mean. My wife, last night, I was, as I was going over with it, with her and shared it with her, and she said, so what are these classes? And I said, I can't answer that question. So Jaime, you also mentioned that we're eligible for a lot of funding for this. And I'm glad that you said that the, the funding isn't driving the projects, but it certainly enables them. Once we as a community decide what we want and are willing to do, it's really great that, that we're eligible for a great deal of funds. You mentioned, I hear, and I just want to state it again, out of the really valuable bike bridge over 101 that's going to occur, we have $9 million in grant funding. Now, some people will say, well, those are still tax dollars, even though they're not coming from the citizens of Palo Alto. That's a true statement. But they're certainly not coming out of our general fund, and they're coming from broader funds because those agencies and governmental bodies say that, yes, we collect common tax dollars, and we actually put them and invest them in to projects that are most valuable, and they view those that way. Now, everybody, not everybody's going to agree with the value of things, but, but they're not done for willy-nilly reasons. So I think moving forward on that project will also be a great breakthrough. And then on the data, this ties in with these other benefits to the community. So it's not only measuring our progress in bikes in and of itself and the impact on a healthy community. And I know that Mayor Holman has brought up the last two years at our retreat, a concept of healthy communities as a community value, something that's going on nationally. And we do, in the bike plan and elsewhere, talk about the health of biking, but it's, it's a big deal. And when people make that shift to predominantly biking in town, it's, it's a big part of their, their, their daily exercise. And I can tell you over the last years, as my wife and I both went from fairly frequent bike riders, recreational riders occasionally riding for errands, to recognizing that, one, we weren't having enough time to exercise, and yet we were driving to and fro throughout the day. And second, there's a lot of, if you're traveling in, in either the north half of the town or the south half of the town, it's equal or faster many times, especially during rush hour, to get there by bike. I got, finally, the city manager talked about kind of tipping points. After the second time that I was late for a meeting, because I realized because I drove rather than rode, it, a light went off. And so I look forward to plowing forward on the details to make sure that we're And so I look forward to plowing forward on the details to make sure that we're successful, responding, listening to and responding to the community, to make sure that we continue to have long-term community broad-based buy-in, including for noncyclists. But I really want to commend the progress that has been going on.
Councilmember Felsuth.
Thank you. I've got two questions, both sort of gearhead. One is a very narrow slice of something that Commissioner Wolbach asked a few minutes ago, which is, is there any literature on, you know, measurement of the impact of sharrows in particular?
There have been studies done. I don't have them with me, but if there's interest, we can try and find them and post them online regarding the effectiveness of sharrows.
Yeah.
I would probably say the bigger fight is that, you know, they don't hurt.
Right.
As an extra measure of trying to guide people. So even though there isn't a strong quantifiable number that says like, they're safer or people were following them, they all felt, well, they don't hurt either.
I know they don't hurt, but I mean, as a cyclist, I like them, but I'm wondering if there's anything that says, here's how effective they are. Is there?
Definitely, they were approved because the studies showed that there was some benefit, not great. And those are sources that we can make available.
Okay. My second question is along with Greg here. I was trying to sort of figure out from the map. And can you take like 30 seconds? And what's the strategy for Alma and El Camino relative to bikes? Is it, we're going to expand the bike infrastructure on those two north-south ones, or are we going to tell everybody, stay away from those, go right on Park Street and Bryant Street?
I think for now, our goal is to improve those parallel routes on Park and Bryant, and really tell people to use those.
Okay. All right. Thanks very much.
If I can, I just did want to know for Councilmember Burke, you know, if you aren't aware, we actually have brought in the last four and a half years, $19 million in different projects for the city. A big chunk of that was the Stanford Palo Alto Trail Program, which will move into construction. That was $9.5 million in itself. But we've brought a lot of grant dollars in. But, you know, the game has changed. If we don't, again, if we don't invest in these design phases on our own, we won't get the capital money later.
I was just going to comment on the sharrows, that I'm surprised there's as much discussion of sharrows as there is, because, you know, it's a piece of paint, right? But if you had some of that sort of, you know, here's, you know, here's what these six studies have shown on their effectiveness, it might sort of help you communicate to people why it's a good thing. That's all. Thanks.
Councilmember Scharf.
Thank you. And first of all, Jaime, thanks for the presentation. And I know what a great job you do on the bicycle stuff. I mean, I see you at every bicycle event. I know how hard you worked on the Stanford Trail stuff. So I want you to know that I at least really appreciate the work you do on this. I think one of the points you made that was really important to me is that it's the whole, it's the whole trail system that really matters, of putting it all together. So in that vein, I really appreciate the fact that you've worked with Google, and we have those. So, but we also have Facebook on the other side. And I know that when I go down, I jog it. When I jog the trail, it dead-ends, you know, on the, in Menlo Park somewhere over there, you know, through East Palo Alto there. And that would be a great commute route if we could make that work. And I don't know if we reached out to Facebook, or, I mean, I've heard Menlo Park has and stuff, but are we helping along with that, or is there, because that would really benefit Palo Alto. You could come right down there and come in, commute that way.
Thank you, Councilmember Scharf. I have to admit, ever since they left Palo Alto, we haven't outreach them as much. I think it's something that we do need to do. I think that's a huge destination for residents that live in Palo Alto, knowing that they work out in that campus. And your points will take.
All right. Because I'd really like to see us push that a little bit. I mean, that's a, that could be great. The other thing is, it's been a while since I've been to Boulder, but one of the things that struck me when I was there was their, was their trail along the creek, frankly. I mean, that was, it's stunning to ride your bike along that creek. And I think it is the off-road biking that really makes it convenient and fun. And so I also agree that we need to be sensitive, but I think, you know, an off-road trail along Matadero Creek is something that could be great for the community as a whole. The other thing, I guess I wanted to ask you also, so when I come up on my bike, you know, up Churchill, right, a lot of the time I use that way to go downtown, because it's actually more convenient, frankly, than going down Bryant. I much prefer the off-road trail. But to get to that off-road trail is very awkward as you come up and cross Alma there. And I haven't seen anything, and I didn't, maybe I didn't understand it, but I don't see anything that fixes that, or at least makes it more convenient. What are we doing there?
Thank you, Councilmember Scharf. Alma is a challenge. I mean, I think everybody in this room, everybody at home recognizes how difficult it is. I really hope, this is just me, I really hope that in the long run, the city and Caltrain, we can really find a way to make some really improved, great separation improvements along Alma Street. I don't know that we'll be able to make really meaningful impactful change until something like that really happens. I mean, we have more bikes crossing Alma and Churchill in the morning at times than we do cars. I mean, if you're, if you make the mistake like I have in the past of parking your car at the corner of Alma and Churchill, you're stuck there for 20 minutes. You can't get out of your car. And so that's, that's a great problem to have. But there are just some projects that, you know, we can't fix them alone. They have to be part of something bigger. And
So we can't fix that right-hand turn? I mean, once you've crossed the railroad tracks and you're on the other side, you want to get on the, you know, the off-road trail?
I apologize.
You know, I mean, I know everyone just, you know, basically takes their bike.
That's later tonight.
But are we going to do that?
Yes. It's, I'll highlight it later tonight.
All right. And then lastly, I wanted to tell you that I actually really like the contra-flow lane when I come out of the Homer Tunnel. That actually really works. And I wanted to use that to highlight that I don't think a lot of cities do these kind of things. And I think that we should really recognize the fact that we are really being innovative on this, and that it works. And I think that's, that's great. Kudos to you for that.
Councilmember Berman.
Well, let's quickly piggyback on some of the things that Councilmember Scharf said. First of all, I think it's a really, I mean, as you can see from the report, incredibly exciting time for bicyclists and bike enthusiasts and pedestrians in Palo Alto. You know, so much work was done on this massive Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan before I got on council. And so thank you to those who put in the hard work on that. Over the past couple of years, we put in a lot of work to identify the full funding for it, which then we'll talk a little bit more about, you know, Maybell and that project later on today. But, you know, we've, that was a big part of the Measure B campaign and the infrastructure work that we've been doing. I've been incredibly impressed by the community outreach aspects of your plan and how thorough you're being, and how flexible we're being in kind of changing tack as we hear different feedback from the community. And I'd also encourage you to use that as an opportunity. You know, to me, we have 24, 25 different projects, and we're going to be doing an exhaustive amount of community outreach for each project. Use that as almost a focus group opportunity to test different messages and test their effectiveness. Because, you know, something that we've talked about a lot today is, you know, the success with the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan will increase or improve the quality of life for all Palo Altons by decreasing the amount of traffic in town, by decreasing the amount of parking in certain really congested areas. You know, so maybe, maybe that's already a big piece of your message that you're using when meeting with the community. But, I mean, I think that has risen to the top of the list of concerns in our community, and this is a major part of the solution. And the more that we can convince folks of that and make them understand that, I think the more openness there'll be to maybe, you know, new sort of pioneer-type, you know, strategies that you're trying to implement in the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. So I think that's all really great. And I've also been really impressed by the use of technology and the continued use of technology and trying to, you know, get the data that we all want and that the community, you know, is going to want to see based on any decisions we make. One question that I had, two quick questions that I had. One is, I've randomly gotten complaints, it's normally in the form of random anecdotes from residents about people walking on sidewalks, almost getting laid out by people biking on sidewalks. Is there anything that we are trying to do or anything that we can do to try to, you know, educate folks on? And people understand if that's on areas where there aren't bike lanes, but I've heard a lot of complaints of that, you know, it's areas where there are bike lanes. You know, is there anything that we can do to try to encourage bikers to bike in the bike lanes and not, you know, scare our folks walking on the sidewalk?
Thank you, Councilmember Berman. It's actually a really good question you're raising. And if I may, it's just a really good education opportunity for me, for the rest of the community, for the council. It is not illegal for people to ride their bicycle if they're under the age of 12 and under on a sidewalk. As a matter of fact, the vehicle code says that you can do that. It's a little difficult for us, because the vehicle code also says, "But, hey, if you're over 13 and you don't feel comfortable on the street," well, they just ride on the sidewalk. So it's kind of one of those, one of those laws that you shouldn't, but it's not illegal if you do it anyway. So what we've been trying to do in areas like downtown and areas where we're trying to get people to get off of their bike, we've been experimenting with different types of messages. We did the dismount zones along the University Avenue underpass. We've done the, you know, the, you know, walk-bike stencils, and a lot of communities have done similar things. But it's, it is difficult for us. I mean, you're in a community where people are used to being on their bike and being able to move. They want to move on the sidewalk if they can't be in the road. And that's where building out these facilities and giving them an alternative option is really important.
So, and sorry, just so I had that correct. So 12 and under, you're, it's perfectly legal to bike on the sidewalk. 13 and older, you're not, it's technically illegal, but you can if you feel uncomfortable riding in the street? That is a pretty ambiguous rule. Okay. You mentioned randomly, not randomly, but you mentioned earlier that we're a pioneer in using some of the different materials on the streets, and folks come to us and say, "Hey, try this out, try that out." Do we get those materials for free when they're asking us to essentially test out their product, or how does that work?
So, yes. Almost all these tests we've done, we have not paid for them.
Great.
We cover the cost of traffic control, you know, to help them set up and deploy the materials. But, you know, I've had a very consistent message to vendors, "We'd love to test your product if you pay for it."
Cool. Cool. That's great for everybody. And hopefully they work, and, you know, it's even better. I think those are all the points I had for this one. You know, thank you very much for all the work you've done. It's, you know, I think, you know, you've got a ton of support in the community for the plan that we have and the steps that we're going to be taking over the next couple of years to really, you know, now fund a lot of these projects. And hopefully we'll see the impact on the backend of beating whatever communities we want to compare ourselves to in whatever metrics we want to use to get everyone on their bikes. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I have just a couple of things here, and then we'll be listening to the public. We have one speaker card. It will be Rob Robinson. So my comments are these. Like, you started out saying that you don't always get it right. And I was really glad to hear you say that, because you're an engineer, and as a lot of things, there's the science and the art, right? And so I was glad to hear you say that, because I wouldn't want staff to be afraid of never making a mistake, because the creativity comes from that willingness. So we wouldn't want you to be wrong all the time, of course, and you aren't. But I was glad to actually hear you say that and support that. The staff report talks about planning a transportation commission and the specific projects going there, but it doesn't mention Parks and Rec. And yet, part of this is to facilitate people getting to recreation areas, you know, our parks, our libraries, community centers, that sort of thing. But there's no reference to Parks and Rec that I found. So can you speak to that?
Thank you, Mayor Holman. You are 100% correct, you know, that we didn't reference the Parks and Rec Commission in there. We definitely don't ignore them. I think we try to take more of a project collective approach in trying to get to them for an approval process. When we're doing things like the Midtown Connector Project or the Matadero, they're definitely going to be a stakeholder of that project. You know, so it's something that, you know, just because we have so many other kind of projects, and we're trying to streamline that process, who we outreach to, and so we're just selective with the PRC. They've been great supporters, by the way, of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. Overall, you know, the plan that you see there was a lot of their input, as a matter of fact, when we went through that specific process. But, you know, I do apologize that I failed to reference that in the report.
And I encourage you to, you know, as they're working on the Parks Master Plan, I mean, it makes perfect sense that they like to look at the master plan for this as you're building it out. So, building out the plan, that is. Then, the sharrows and the street markings and the pushback that we've seen from some neighborhoods, Councilmember Nuss mentioned Bryant Street, for instance, is, are the greens that are being suggested, are they universal? Do we have input on those? Can we suggest, you know, something else that isn't so stark? And the reason I say that is because, you know, we have pushback about, you know, too much signage, it's eyelitter. This is pretty jarring, too. I want bicyclists to be screaming at me in terms of their presence, so that I see them. Okay? But I'm not so sure, my particular perspective, and there are people who are serious bicyclists up here, but I'm not so sure that we need the sharrows and the bike lanes themselves to just scream that here we are. Is there a reason that these have to be this stark? Because I think that's a lot of the pushback that we get in the neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mayor Holman. The green color, the lime color that we've been using more recently, that is a federal standard color. So we are adhering to the colors that have been defined by the Federal Highway Administration. We haven't always used that same color. We use some darker shades of green, like the bicycle corrals in the downtown, and some of the early greenback sharrows and green bike lanes that we did along Channing Avenue. So I think from the standpoint that we know there is, you know, federal standard coming, we've been trying to adhere to that so we can comply in the future. But again, every community, we are definitely trying to be context-sensitive. I mean, we started out with an approach to try and be standard. You know, we can definitely not use it if that's what a community wants, and that's okay.
So if we have some input on us being Palo Alto, on moderating that to some extent, I think it would be, it would serve our purposes better to get more buy-in and more application of these kinds of facilities in place. Because I do think, and what I hear, is the color itself is a lot of what people are pushing back against. I think that actually is what I have to say. It does remind me, though, that, not to harp on the color, but there was something said at, I think it was a council meeting many years ago, when there was a lot of push to get larger signage in Palo Alto, and there was a big pushback against it, too. And one of the council members' comments was, "Palo Altons drive slowly and read fast." And I don't know that we drive so slow anymore, but we do read fast. And so it's kind of that early, quick recognition. So we have one member of the public who would like to speak to this, Rob Robinson, and you will have three minutes.
Hi. Thank you. I've been on the payback for about seven years now. And I talk to Jaime and our city manager and my colleagues many, many times. The big gorilla, or the big elephant in the room is the train. So the objections about the packs of bicyclists, they're regulated by the train. So they go east and west mostly, and the cars are stuck in the same jam. So that's the big gorilla that has to be dealt with someday, is getting across the tracks. My passion is let the data drive the designs. And for years, we have said in payback that we'd like to have data before we do something and data after we do something. So I have personally invested time and gotten help from my colleague, Bill Carrington. We have, at the same time, 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., I be at Molly Stone's, he be's at Bryant Street, and we count bicycles. That's all we can do. We can't count cars and pedestrians at the same time. So for years, Park has carried 50% more bicycle traffic north and south than Bryant. And I particularly live on Wilkie, and I was just thrilled to see all the counting going on in the mid-two weeks of May last year. It took a long time for them to be presented, and they're still in draft form on the community outreach that's been going on. So I've mined the data that's available to me. I'd like to see more. The 30%, 37% mode share of bicycles on Wilkie Way, measured at Tennessee. Amazing. And the beauty of it, it runs 24/7. A lot of those cyclists are commuters who work. They have hours that don't match school hours. So they're counted in the darkest of nights. So the intensity is not like the school traffic, but the counts are amazing. So, now, those cyclists are breaking the law by running stop signs, but it's a safe kind of thing, because they're by themselves. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for coming. And Councilmember Burke handed me a note to support my Parks and Rec comments, reminding me that, of course, bicycling is recreation as well as transportation. So with that, we'll conclude this item and go on to item number two. Item number two is recreation, excuse me, recognition. I'm stuck on recreation. Recognition of Mitchell Park Library and Community Center grand opening volunteers. And I believe we have somebody from the library department that will be helping us.
Thanks. Good evening, City Council. My name is Eric Howard. I'm the Assistant Director of the library. And it is, it's my great privilege to be here tonight to recognize the volunteers that made the grand opening of the Mitchell Park Library I have a brief statement from the library director, Monique Laconze-Zeisenheim. And then we have a short clip from that day that I'd like to show you. So Monique writes, "The grand opening at the Mitchell Park Library and Community Center was, as you know, a success, with at least 5,500 people in attendance. The day would not have been a success without the volunteers who helped, and we wanted to give you and the staff a chance to recognize and thank them for their efforts. Of the 77 volunteers we had at the event, we had 45 teens and 32 adults. They gave us roughly 345 total hours, which if you make that into equivalent positions, it equals over $4,000 just from that day.
Mitchell Park Library and the Community Center are wonderful.
The library has had a volunteer program in place for teens and adults for many years to enhance what the staff is able to provide. Once construction is completed," and Monique here is referring also to Rinconada, "the library staff again will be working to make opportunities available that were not possible
We've waited a long time in Palo Alto for this.
I like the library because it's big and there are a lot of books, and you get to choose
while we were in smaller temporary locations. Some volunteers will again be needed to assist with the opening of the Rinconada Library on Saturday, February 14th."
from a lot of places.
That's Valentine's Day.
I like how they have plants on the walls of the library because it looks really nice
Please check the library's website for more information." And so we have a short clip from that day, which I'd like to show you.
and also obviously it's good for the environment. And also, just in general, the design of the library is really nice looking and a big step up from the other libraries in Palo Alto.
I like how this library has a maker space because I've never seen a library that has something as cool as this. And I really like creating things.
It seems so community oriented. It has rooms for the kids and the teens, and it's comfortable and it's open and it's airy.
Well, what I enjoy most about this library is, you know, the fact that I live three blocks away. Now I have, you know, a place to meet my friends, when we have like small projects to do or things to work together on.
A great place for getting books, hanging out. A safe place for the kids to hang out. And for us to be together as a community with the community.
Doing Star Wars.
Conference calls. And meet friends. And go to the cafe and just enjoy all the facilities here.
I really like this library because there are a variety of books and there are also really amazing study desks. And there are amazing food in the cafe right across from the library.
I think it's a great space. I mean, the location is great. There's a lot of open areas. And I think it's organized to build a community, which is great.
Great.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Also, I just want to point out, we have the manager of the Mitchell Park Library here, Ruth Ann Garcia, and the coordinator for the volunteer effort that day, Christine Pennington, one of our great librarians. And if it's okay, I'd like to ask the volunteers to stand. We have some here tonight.
Please.
We have several LAC members, too. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Berman.
Well, I just want to quickly say thank you as well. I was lucky enough to be able to go to the grand opening and was so excited and not surprised, I guess, but impressed by the enthusiasm of everybody there, the amount of people there, but also the volunteers who were there. I felt, you know, I spent maybe an hour, hour and a half just walking around, and every couple of minutes, everywhere I turned, somebody was asking me, did I know where I was going? Is there something else I wanted to see? You know? It was really just, it made the whole experience that much better. The group of students who sang, the guy who sang the National Anthem just crushed it. I mean, people were talking about that the whole day. And so thank you guys so much for making that day a really, a really great experience for 5,000-plus people in the community. That was really great.
I would agree with Councilmember Berman. And I think it was pretty remarkable, too. Not only have the 5,500 people turn out that day and thank you to the efforts of the volunteers, that's a big part of that. And also, there were, City Manager Keen, there were 1,000 new library cards issued prior to opening, and I think there were 300 and something that day. I don't know how many since, but, you know, thanks to the launch of the Mitchell Park Library that day, we're off to a great start and much appreciate all your support and efforts. Very much appreciated.
Thank you. Please join us on February 14th. We'll have to see you then.
Indeed.
What, Valentine's Day? That's not, I want to clarify for the record for Councilmember Bird, he was talking about the opening, the grand opening of the Rinconada, formerly Maine Library, to take place on Valentine's Day.
And from what I understand, haven't seen it yet, but from what I understand, it's another, another very great success in our library program. So, look forward to seeing you all there. What are the hours that day?
The ceremony begins at 11:00 and the activities run until 4:00, and then we will close at 6:00.
Good question. Thank you, Councilmember Menace. So with that, we go to agenda changes and deletions. I see no lights or suggestions on that regard, so we'll move on to City Manager comments. Jim?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, just a couple of comments. First of all, we did want to share that the Western Regional Region Conference of APCO, which is the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials, being held April 7th through 9th in Sacramento, has invited the Palo Alto MIOC, or the Mobile Emergency Operations Center we have, and other related emergency equipment to be the featured in Keystone Exhibit at this conference. This is a real honor and unique position for Palo Alto. And again, congrats to Ken Duker, our folks in the Office of Emergency Services, for their work in that regard. Secondly, one or two of you, I think, were in the elevator with me this afternoon when Tim Wong of our planning staff mentioned to me the notice I'm going to read to you right now, and that is that as of 4:00 p.m. today, we received word that the State Department of Housing and Community Development has certified the city's adopted housing element as being in compliance with state law. As you know, this is the last step in a year-long process, and I certainly want to thank the council, particularly the Regional Housing Mandate Committee, and the staff for all of their hard work. And we're also grateful for the assistance and support of the community panel, who work with staff over the course of the year. With a particular thanks to Tim Wong, who of course is going out on a high note with this, as he's departing our city for another opportunity in the region. But we're sorry to lose him, but this is a nice way for him to close out his time here. And then lastly, just seeing that, you know, I can't get enough of seeing these videos and things of the community about at Mitchell or the things that we're doing and thinking about the session on the, of the opening on Valentine's Day. Just a little digression. I mentioned this to a couple of you, but I happened to be in Bainbridge Island this weekend, which is in the Seattle area. And I was walking down the street and I saw posted in the Chamber of Commerce window an executive order that had been issued by the City of Bainbridge City Manager, who is a friend and colleague of mine. And it was in, there was, of course, the Green Bay Packers and the Seattle Seahawks were playing on that Sunday. And Doug had issued an executive order banning cheese possession and consumption in City Hall on Blue Friday. Executive Order 121212, those of you who know the sort of 12th man thing, banning cheese possession and consumption. It said, "By the authority vested in me as City Manager of City Bainbridge Island, Kip Saffron, blah, 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 and the Bainbridge Municipal Code, is hereby ordered as follows. Section 1, all executive branch departments and divisions of local government shall authorize employees to celebrate Blue Friday on each Friday prior to any games of the Seahawks by wearing Seahawks jerseys, logo gear, team colors, and gathering at lunches, et cetera, for tailgating-type foods and non-alcoholic beverages. Section 2, on Sunday, January 18th, the Seattle Seahawks' opponent in the NFC Championship game with the Green Bay Packers, AKA Cheeseheads, fans of the Green Bay Packers are frequently seen wearing obnoxious wedge-shaped foam hats painted yellow. And then Section 3, due to the relationship with the Green Bay Packers or fans and cheese possession of and consumption of cheese or cheese-flavored products shall be banned in Bainbridge Island City Hall on Friday, January 16, 2015." But anyway, the point is, is that this thing went viral. And it was really funny just seeing all over this town, over the weekend, people having fun, tourists going by snapping pictures. I mentioned something, I went to the grocery store and all the cheese had been moved out from where it was, and it just said, "Go Seahawks." So forget what your team was. But the point was, and I sent him a little email, and I actually ran into him. I said, "What, you probably garnered more community goodwill and good feeling across town, people having fun with something that was done that simply." So just sort of a little teaser along those lines. On February 19th and 20th, we've invited a guy named Peter Kagiyama here to come to Palo Alto. He's been working with cities and towns and villages across the country on sort of what makes our cities lovable and how do we easily engage with our community and celebrate the things that are special about them. Reading something here from, one of the things that he said was, you know, in our country, of course, not enough of us love our cities and towns, or certainly clearly. People can identify things they hate about their cities or towns, traffic, ugly design, et cetera, et cetera. And we know how to ask for potholes to be fixed, but how do we, how do we push for and ask more for art, beauty, comfort, conviviality, and fun? And he says, "Where's the fun?" So really, as part of, you know, continuing outreach in our Palo Alto, he will be here to talk about this. We're looking at doing an on-hands workshop about what are simple, easy, cheap, inexpensive things that could be done that engage the community, celebrate Palo Alto, and people just have fun up there. We have a lot of hard work to do, but this is a piece of it. And a little thing we even just started talking about, about since Mitchell, I mean, since Rinconada's opening on Valentine's Day, and he will be here later that week on this workshop, For the Love of Palo Alto. In many ways, we're sending our whole city of Valentine, starting on the 14th, at the opening of the Rinconada Library, and how we can start to spend that week really celebrating the things that people care so much about, and how we can all sort of activate those things in some fun and interesting ways. So I'll have more to come on that, but mark your calendars. February 19th and 20th, that's a Thursday and Friday, right after State of the City, I believe.
That would be true. And so you don't currently have hours and location for the 19th and 20th?
We are putting the final touches on it, but almost all the events are going to take place at Mitchell Park. So we'll, we'll get the specific times for the different happenings.
Great, thank you. And to follow up on one of your comments, I would also like to extend my congratulations to Planning Director Gittleman, and hopefully you will extend those thanks to Tim Wong for a certification of the housing element of the comp plan. So we now go to oral communications, and we have five speakers, so you'll have six speakers. And you'll have three minutes each. And first speaker is Ken Horowitz. If the next speaker, Winter Dellenbach, could come forward, that would be helpful. Thank you a lot.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Ken Horowitz, I've lived in Palo Alto for 35 years. I'm here again to help about 1,500 Palo Altons to keep their recreational facility alive in Baron Park. As you know, the Y moved out on October 1st. And thanks to a little tip from Councilmember Burke, found out a little bit more information about what's going on over Palo Alto Square and a number of facilities. There's actually a real estate firm in Southern California, which should be interesting, and quite an aggressive firm called Hudson Pacific. I'm going to leave these documents with the city clerk. But they put a bid in for eight prime real estate locations within Palo Alto. I'll just read off the names of them. 2180 Sand Hill, 45,000 square feet. Embarcadero Place, 326,000 square feet. Palo Alto Square, 326,000 square feet. Clock Tower Square, 100,000 square feet. Page Mill Center, 176,000 square feet. Lockheed, 46,000 square feet. Hillview, 270,000 square feet. And Foothill Research Center, 195,000. Over a million square footage. This particular firm from Southern California has put bids in, and they're presently negotiating the financing to get that, that deal done. I think the city council needs to know about this, particularly just reading the mayor's latest email about her message about so much retail space going into office space. And so I'm going to leave with the clerk, these particular documents. Hudson Pacific Properties, their strategy is quite clear. I'm going to leave a copy of their strategy. They used the term aggressive leasing. They're in business, you know, to make money. And we all know that office space is a little more productive financially than a gym. But we want to keep a recreational facility there in Baron Park. So I guess my question, my charge to you is to see if you can find out some information about this Hudson Pacific, what their intent is. Possibly they won't let you know right now. Do they have a timeframe? Our hope is that they will work with the city council, obviously, and not just go out there and destroy all the, all the things that we've done well in Palo Alto to put more office space. Thank you for your time. And I'll leave these documents with the city clerk.
And thank you, Mr. Horowitz. Winter Dellenbach to be followed by Daniel. That's all I have here. If you could come forward, that would be helpful.
Joe Semidians, Supervisor Semidians, proposal that he will be making next week to the County Board of Supervisors regarding Buena Vista Mobile Home Park.
As you know, the Y moved out on October 1st, and thanks to a little tip from Councilmember Burke, found out a little bit more information about what's going on over Palo Alto Square and a number of facilities. There's actually a real estate firm in Southern California, which should be interesting, and quite an aggressive firm called Hudson Pacific. I'm going to leave these documents with the city clerk, but they put a bid in for eight prime real estate locations within Palo Alto. I'll just read off the names of them. 2180 Sand Hill, 45,000 square feet. Embarcadero Place, 326,000 square feet. Palo Alto Square, 326,000 square feet. Clock Tower Square, 100,000 square feet. Page Mill Center, 176,000 square feet. Lockheed, 46,000 square feet. Hillview, 270,000 square feet. And Foothill Research Center, 195,000. Over a million square footage. This particular firm from Southern California has put bids in, and they're presently negotiating the financing to get that, that deal done. I think the city council needs to know about this, particularly just reading the, the mayor's latest email about her message about so much retail, retail space going into office space. And so I'm going to leave with the clerk, these particular documents. Hudson Pacific Properties, their strategy is quite clear, I'm going to leave a copy of their strategy. They used the term aggressive leasing. They're in business, you know, to make money, and we all know that office space is a little more productive financially than a gym. But we want to keep a recreational facility there in Baron Park. So I guess my question, my charge to you is to see if you can find out some information about this Hudson Pacific, what their intent is. Possibly they won't let you know right now. Do they have a timeframe? Our hope is that they will work with the city council, obviously, and, and not just go out there and destroy all the, all the things that we've done well in Palo Alto to put more office space. Thank you for your time, and I'll leave these documents with the city clerk.
And thank you, Mr. Horowitz. Winter Dellenbach to be followed by Daniel. That's all I have here. If you could come forward, that would be helpful.
Joe Semidians, Supervisor Semidian's proposal that he will be making next week to the County Board of Supervisors regarding Buena Vista Mobile Home Park, and his press release today sent widely, as I understand it, to area cities and to the media. This is a day we see for celebration. This, I talked to the president of the Buena Vista Residents Association about the pledge of $8 million should the supervisors indeed ratify it next week, which they're expected to do, to go toward the purchase of Buena Vista Mobile Home Park. It's the first time there has been a really concrete indication of an inner will and an inner resolve to make this anything, as someone said this morning, "A very orderly march over the cliff." We are greatly heartened by this, but we do not imagine that this is the end of the hard work and the heavy lifting, or whatever other cliches want to bring to the discussion. But it is an indication that this is serious and a matter of determination and political will, and not just on behalf, not on the part of the county, but on the part of the city. I want to read a couple of things. I hope you all have or will read his press release and his proposal. A couple of things from it. "The conversation about Buena Vista to date has been almost exclusively about compensation for tenants upon closure," said Semidian. "I'm hoping to start a new conversation about what it would take to keep the park open for the foreseeable future." And he goes on to say, "What needs to happen is to, the county will be, wants to enter in discussions with the City of Palo Alto, local housing associations, and the Buena Vista Mobile Home Parks Resident Association, and other interested parties for the purpose of securing the long-term viability of the mobile home park as a deed-restricted affordable This is absolutely wonderful and right, and it needs the participation of the city, and you need to multitask, which we're all good at that, right? We're Palo Alto. So we're moving toward an April appeal hearing, it's very legalistic, you're going to be considering relocation plan, relocation amounts to each household, but here you have a chance to actually resolve this thing, possibly before the April hearing, when there's maximum leverage on the part of the city. You need to partner with the county and see if you can resolve this. The Gisser family could be thought of honorably in this town, and the residents could continue to provide their wonderful population as part of our larger city. So please do the right thing.
Thank you. Daniel, if you could give us your last name, that would be helpful, to be followed by Sabell Lavelle-Bouchon.
Honorable Mayor and Honorable Vice Mayor and Honorable Councilman, my name is Daniel Gold. Just to briefly introduce myself, I have, my family and I have ties here in Palo Alto, starting with my grandfather, and I just returned here last year. I began to, when I started working here, I began to start sharing my home on Airbnb. I don't know if you're familiar with that, it's a website that allows you to share your home through renting it on a website. And while I was doing this, I came across, I did it to make friends, and then while I was doing that, I learned how overburdened the real estate market here was in Palo Alto, and the kind of needs that I was finding through Stanford students and PhD students and the likes. And it's important to me that these people are able to work here and study here and, and be able to afford it, and not having them, you know, stay in outer boroughs like Mountain View, and where the real estate's a little bit cheaper, and having to commune all the way here, and even, even revenue-wise, having, you know, to spend money outside of the city. It's important to me because I have many other friends in the city that are also hosts, Airbnb hosts, and I received a letter recently, there was a cease and desist order to stop it, and I had, you know, I had checked the codes, along with my girlfriend, who's a lawyer, also went to Stanford, and we, we found that, you know, it wasn't quite fair, that we feel the city is currently involved in a pending decision to find whether we want to have Airbnb here, we want to share, want to allow that, and how are we going to tax the situation? And, and we thought it wasn't fair because we're still in that pending situation, and for the enforcement to sort of, from my understanding, the way we feel, circumventing that and using definitions of codes to sort of, you know, enforce people to stop doing this before we make a decision is, I, I don't think it's the right message to send to other hosts that are here in it, because there's a lot of real property owners here in Palo Alto that do that, grandmothers and grandfathers, and, you know, that have extra space and whatnot, and, and it generates revenue. So I, I just like to, hopefully we can expedite that process, because I know that March 31st is the next day, is the, is the day that we should come to some sort of a resolution on that, so, thank you.
And if you have any questions about the status of where we are, you can speak with either City Attorney or Planning Director Gittleman, who are here this evening. Sabell Lavelle-Bouchon to be followed by Bob Moss.
Thank you.
I'll be brief, but this is an evening for celebration and joy. We are going to most likely keep our neighbors, our most economically and ethnically diverse neighborhood of affordable housing, the year of Buena Mobile Home Park. And I toured it, it's so neat, it's so clean, it shows that the people really care about their community, about where they live, and I think we're, Joe Semidian has proven that he cares. He cares a lot, he's taken that leadership position, and I just want to thank him, although he's not here and absent here, and celebrate and thank city council members who perhaps also encouraged this to happen. So thank you, and let's celebrate. I think we should have a citywide celebration once it's done, once it's complete. Thank you.
Bob Moss to be followed by Don Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor Holman, and council members. You may recall that late last year, there was a column in The Post by Diana Diamond talking about the need to evaluate consultants, and she asked for data from the city manager, but she was giving him very short timeframe, and he complained, "You're not giving me enough time to really respond," and I, I agree that was valid, and she even agreed that there hadn't been enough time to respond, but that was a long time ago, and I think the issue is worth looking at again and getting a response, because we spend millions of dollars a year on consultants, and I'm not sure we have a real rationale for why we're doing it. The normal reason is we're hiring consultants, so the first one is, well, the staff is busy. That doesn't impress me. When I worked for Admiral Rickover, he had a saying, "If you can't get the job done by working 24 hours a day, work nights." So I never dismissed the project because I was too busy, I did it anyway. Second reason is, well, this is something we're not familiar with. We don't understand the problem, we don't understand how to do a solutions. And again, I was constantly being asked while I was working as a rocket scientist to come up with things that we had never done before. For example, how do you repair a spacecraft that is not functioning on the surface of the moon? Well, we did it. So you can do things that you've never done before, and actually, I, I welcome having different issues and different problems, because it helped me perform better, and I think the staff would work the same way. And of course, there's the, the hidden reasons why if we give it to a consultant, we can delay getting an answer, and if the, if the answer that comes back upsets the community, we can point to the consultant and say it's all their fault. So I think we ought to take a careful look again at where we are really hiring consultants, that we really need them, and reevaluate the number and the quantity and quality of consultants. Now, if you wanted to find out how much we actually spend on consultants a year, and how many consultants, and what topics, I could get that information for you just by going through a couple of years' minutes. It would take me a few hours, maybe a day, but, you know, if you really need the data, it's out there and it's available. So I think the information is worth looking at, and I think it's worth something the council might want to talk about during the retreat at the end of the month, because if the staff can handle it, why spend the money on consultants?
Don Anderson to be followed by our final speaker, Herb Borack. Welcome, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. My name is Don Anderson, I live in Baron Park, and I want to add my congratulations to Supervisors Semidian and Cortese, who have submitted the recommended action to the full Board of Supervisors to approve an investment of $8 million of county money, and also to commit the county administration to enter into discussions with, among others, the administration of the City of Palo Alto toward, and I quote, "Establishing the long-term viability of Buena Vista Mobile Home Park as deed-restricted affordable housing." I think this is a major breakthrough in, in leadership on this issue. I think it puts serious money on the table. This is, of course, pending the decision by the supervisors to go along with this recommendation, but I hope and expect that that will happen in the next week. And I think that it, though it's serious money, it's not enough money, and I think that it's time now, for those of you sitting up there at that lectern, to pick up your end of the responsibility and the, and, and put up some serious money of our own in this city, to make sure that we don't send away 100 families from Buena Vista Mobile Home Park. Thank you.
And thank you. And Mr. Borack actually is speaking to a consent calendar item, so that concludes oral communications, and we now move to the consent calendar. Mr. Borack, would you care to speak to item number five on consent?
Mayor Holman and council members, we received this afternoon a communication from Emily Renzel about this item with her concern about proper procedure being followed on, on this item, especially in regard to this being an, an open space area, and that would have, this is the sailing station item that's part of this contract. It's a parking lot for the sailing station. I'm concerned about the, the process in its entirety, that is, next week's agenda contains an item for approving a grant that would pay for this part of the contract, but here you have the contract before you act on that item, and that item itself seems to be a staff report that's in progress rather than complete, because the environmental section of it has editorial comments in it rather than a real environmental section. The history of this sailing station is that it was created about 25 years ago after the council and the voters agreed to stop dredging for, for the yacht harbor, and that it was possible at that time to navigate small boats where the sailing station is located. But the consultant's report that was done at the time said that over time, the area would silt up, and it was the understanding of the council that it was not approving future dredging for that area, but rather that there would be the sailing station there for that period of time. Over time, that navigable area has reduced, which reduced the number of hours that the sailing station can be used per day. Staff from Open Space came before the Parks and Recreation Commission some time ago with an informational item on this, and I thought they would be coming back for their recommendations, it is on dedicated parkland, and I would recommend that you remove this from the consent calendar for the purpose of directing staff to delay the implementation of the contract for this one particular item until there's further direction of council after you reviewed the entire project regarding this parking lot. The contract provides for the ability to delete items, so that delaying an item is certainly possible, rather than have the contract proceed for the parking lot by the sailing station before you act on the grant item next week, and before you have the environmental review, and before you look at the entire project as to what commitments may or may not have been made about future dredging, for example. It may be that the, that the authority that would be giving you the money looked at the sailing station at a point in time, and they said, "At this point in time, it's a place where people can sail, and therefore here's the money," without regard to what the future would be. Thank you.
Thank you. Our process allows for a question to be asked. Councilmember Schmidt, you have your light on.
Yes, several members of the public have brought up the issue about putting concrete paving on the sailing station parking lot. Is this vote, a vote for that?
So Councilmember Schmidt, or Vice Mayor Schmidt, I think it was pointed out, we're going to have an item related to the sailing station next week. This is a general contract relating to a range of asphalt and construction components. I certainly would not recommend not proceeding with this right now, I mean, we have lots of work that can be done. I, I would add to this, though, and I think as the speaker noted, that there are the abilities to make exceptions or, you know, deducts from the project. When the council awards a contract like this, that authority is, is within the purview I have as a city manager, and I would say to the council, as part of this particular action, we would not be proceeding on that, that particular section until, you know, we'd sort of resolve these outstanding questions. So I think that it would be, wouldn't be wise to not proceed with the contract award in and of itself, but I would caveat and publicly announce that we would not proceed with any action under this contract award till we've answered those other questions. Hopefully, we can do that by next week. Yep.
Thank you. And with that, do we have a motion for the consent calendar? So we have a motion by Councilmember Niss and a second by Councilmember Schmidt, and I have one clarification for city manager on item five, and that is, you said you thought you would have answers to this question by next week. Will that also include the process that would be followed?
I'm hoping so, yeah. We'll, we'll take a look at it. I mean, obviously, we just got this today, and so it was a little bit late. I would make a pitch, I know people are really busy, but one of the advantages of the earlier packet release was to get public input as early as possible to, so I think we should be in a position to be able to respond.
Okay, thank you very much. So Councilmember Niss, just to be clear, your motion to approve the consent calendar includes the city manager's comments having to do with the sailing station portion of the contract in item number five. Okay, thank you. With that, we will vote on the consent calendar on the board. And that passes unanimously. Thank you all, and thank you, city manager. So we move now to item number eight, which is the approval of concept plan line and implementation plan for Maybell Avenue Bicycle Boulevard and Churchill Avenue Enhanced Bike Way projects. And Jaime, welcome back.
Thank you very much, Mayor Holman. Give me one second here, you, you're too fast for me. So again, for the people at home, my name is Jaime Rodriguez, I'm the Chief Transportation Official for the City of Palo Alto, and tonight, you know, we earlier had a study session on the Bicycle Boulevard program, and tonight's item right now is to present to the council the concept plan lines for two of those projects that we're working on, the Maybell Avenue Bicycle Boulevard and the Churchill Avenue Enhanced Bike Way. So again, on this map here, this is kind of showing you all the projects that we're doing at the city right now, again, there's a little over a couple dozen projects. The two projects that we're going to discuss tonight are kind of bolded in red, and include Churchill Avenue, the portion between the Caltrain tracks and El Camino Real on Churchill, and Maybell actually includes three specific And Maybell actually includes three specific corridors, El Camino Way, Maybell, and Georgia. And I'm going to start with the Maybell project tonight. If you have any questions, feel free to ask, or we'll wait till the end. But for the people at home that don't know, Maybell Avenue is already an existing Bicycle Boulevard. It's classified that way in the Bicycle Network map, and it's been a Bicycle Boulevard for several years now. Not to say again that it can't be better, and that's something that we want to try and do, but the goal of the project is really to extend the Boulevard's reach and to connect it to other facilities in the city. Specifically, we want to look at extending the Bicycle Boulevard across El Camino Real onto El Camino Way, at a minimum to East Meadow Drive, and then that'd be kind of going east, and then west of Maybell, we want to improve the connections along Georgia and Donald Drive to increase the connection to Truman Middle School as well as to George -- I'm sorry, Gunn High School. So we've had a series of community meetings for Maybell. That's a project that we've been working on for a while longer now, so we've had four meetings for that specific project. And, you know, we've refined the project to date, and what we've heard, a kind of brief summary of some of the input from the community, is that overall, they're fairly supportive of the projects as they're going to be showing to you tonight. And I think part of that is because we've really tried to be context-sensitive to the fact that the facilities they're recommending are in alignment with kind of the visions of the Barron Park neighborhood, and that we're trying to preserve that rural feel of the community. That was a strong message to be context-sensitive, I think we've tried to respect. There was also dealing with this conversation about where do you deploy kind of green facilities? There was a stronger preference towards wanting to see those types of facilities on El Camino Way, you know, but not on Georgia and Donald, which are the more of the residential portions of the street. And so I have the overall corridor to show you if you're interested in seeing that, but I thought that what would be more meaningful for you and for people at home is to actually see kind of what the visions can be. And so for El Camino Way, for those of you that don't know that, that is a kind of combination residential kind of commercial area. It's kind of, it's very heavily parked today. It's parked all the time. There's a lot of uses out there from the restaurant uses, there's going to be daycares kind of coming into that area, there's residences to the east side, and this parallels El Camino Real. So one concept that we had was just to really better reiterate to people that there are bicycle facilities in that area, there's bicycle use in that area, and one concept is just to use those greenback sharrows. So that's kind of what they look like for the people at home, and that was one concept. You'll see in the background where those kind of pedestrian crossings are. Those are some of the improvements that we've already started to implement with pedestrian-activated flashing beacon systems. But one concept that was also proposed was, you know, because we don't want to take parking away because it's such a heavily parked area, we can at least get bicycling in on one approach. And for those of you that have never been out there, there are a lot of commuters, student commuters, adult commuters, that travel from Meadow onto El Camino Way to get out towards Maybell, to get out to the research park or to the schools. And so that's literally an area where there'll just be 50 kids at a time traveling down the corridor. And so one concept is to look at installing a biking, at least on the southbound approach, and then in the evening hours when people are coming back home, the bicycles are more dispersed, so kind of share the road shero concept, you know, something that was kind of a, something that we came up with as a medium for the project. So we'd love your perspective on that thought tonight, by the way. On Maybell Avenue, the portions of the existing Bicycle Boulevard, we had a lot of the same discussion, trying to be context-sensitive. We could just, you know, take an approach of preserving the bike lanes that exist in one direction and doing sharrows in the other. Here on the left, this would be coming out towards El Camino Real, and this would be coming out towards Gunn. Same thing here, El Camino Real, kind of Gunn High School. I did want to make one note. I saw a lot of emails from people at home that you may have seen also. Just to make it clear, people, we are not proposing to remove any of the existing always stops along Maybell Avenue. That was, again, one of those really early concepts that we proposed out there. Was there value in removing some barriers, removing stops? People did not react well to that, and that's okay. You know, we removed that option, we refined ways to enhance the existing always stops, but we knew that there were some areas where there was still a lot of interaction that we felt could be improved between bicyclists and pedestrians and automobiles, and so we proposed the concept of creating a raised intersection table, raising the whole intersection up, making everyone slow down even after they've stopped and moved through the intersection, and making sure that bicyclists are also realizing that they have to respect that space. And so those raised intersection tables at Amaranta and Maybell that are shown here is a concept that we were looking at for a longer-term design concept. The other thing, too, with the Barron Park neighborhood is, again, there are no existing sidewalk facilities, and so we're trying to respect that rural feel, but we really felt that, and the community told us that, they needed a space to feel that they could walk on and bike on. And so one concept was to try and take that pavement space that is already there and kind of stamping it or giving it a different color to designate visually space that can be dedicated for bicyclists and pedestrians. And how we kind of sign and mark that space, we can work out in the design phase, but this tries to show two near-term options, something simple as far as adding sharrows in the near term, but in the long term, kind of texturing and coloring that pavement space and raising up the intersections, locations where we want to make sure people are slowing down and respecting one another as they move through the intersection. Along at Georgia and Donald, again, an area where we heard a lot of concerns about speeding, and so we want to make sure that we propose some traffic calming measures that includes speed tables, in this case, that are a little larger and taller, to make sure cars slow down as they're going over those humps. But, you know, again, we were asked, "Don't give us greenback sharrows," and, you know, but people recognized that needed to be some type of way to highlight the fact that that space is being shared, and so we went with traditional white sharrows to kind of designate the path that we would want bicyclists to follow. And here at the Gunn High School spur path, that's an area that today is relatively narrow, has some very short kind of chain link fences on the sides. We'd want to remove those chain link fences, widen out the trail, realign it, and make it a safer facility, and in this case, use the crosswalk also as a speed table, so try and get multi-use out of different devices. And here's a visual of what the combination crosswalk speed table could look like at the Gunn spur path, and you'll see here how we proposed to realign the path to move it kind of away from the adjacent residences' driveways. On Churchill Avenue, we're looking at the portion of Churchill, again, between the Caltrain tracks and El Camino Real, and what you see here in green is the existing Embarcadero Trail that parallels the Caltrain tracks behind the Palo Alto High School football fields. One of the concepts that we'd like to propose to you tonight is to extend that trail, which today ends at Castileja, and extend it all the way to El Camino Real, really give bicyclists a great separated space so that they can ride with their children. Because we saw a lot of recreational activity, especially on the weekends, people going out to the Stanford campus. And we also want to look at making specific improvements at Castileja where the Bicycle Boulevard would intersect with Churchill Avenue, but more importantly, trying to clean up all of the confusion that's happening at the El Camino Real intersection. And so I think you'll be hopefully happy to see some of the proposals that we're going to be showing you tonight. As a quick summary of input that we've heard from the community, there was a lot of interest in wanting to make sure that these areas were safer for pedestrians, specifically trying to see if we could work with the state to implement turn restrictions at key intersections like El Camino Real, even if it was just by time of day. They asked for a lot of simple fixes as far as trying to clean up intersection visibility by, you know, just adding some parking restrictions, a red curb for one car length, you know, trimming up bush visibility, that kind of stuff. So those are things, again, that we're not waiting for, we're doing them now. There was a lot of interest in wanting to see if we could get bicyclists out of the bike lane on Churchill going towards El Camino Real to help them get to that trail that goes to the back of Palo Alto High School and avoid the mix of autos and bikes at the Churchill intersection, I'm sorry, Castileja intersection. There was a lot of interest in doing some of the similar treatments that we just showed you from Maybell, where we add crosswalks across Churchill but have those also serve as traffic calming devices, meaning tables, to slow vehicles down. And again, extending that multi-use path that is the Embarcadero Trail out towards El Camino Real. So here's kind of what the vision is for this specific corridor, starting with the El Camino Real intersection. We envisioned trying to extend some of the very specific streetscape type of improvements that were already started at Stanford Avenue in front of Starbucks, and taking in some of those same kind of textured crosswalk looks and feels to this intersection to being created consistently down the rest of the corridor. We may have referenced earlier this evening to the Palo Alto-Stanford Trail Program. Stanford will be moving forward with the Perimeter Trail Project and adding a multi-use trail on El Camino Real. This project will connect to that at the Churchill intersection, and so what we want to do is be able to guide bicyclists through the intersection in addition to just getting them to El Camino Real. You'll notice here a brand-new crosswalk that doesn't exist at the El Camino Real intersection on the north side of the street, and so we want to just kind of complete that link of developing what we call a complete-street approach towards the intersection treatment. We're also accommodating facilities for transit to the north side of the intersection as well as the south, and trying to clean up the way in which inner pedestrians, kind of once they cross from Stanford, there's that little parallel road that kind of goes next to El Camino Real in the South Gate neighborhood, and it's an area where pedestrians kind of get lost. We want to kind of clean that up and make it a safer place to walk. You begin to see here the new right turn lane that would let people from, coming from Alma, turn north onto El Camino Real to go out towards Town and Country or the Stanford Shopping Center. That's something that, you know, we've been asked for repeatedly, at least in the four years that I've been here, I hear that at least twice a month, and so I think people were really happy to see that being an option. Why you're seeing this tonight in this form is because we want to make sure that you're in concurrence with that type of a capacity approach, because we would need to negotiate with Palo Alto Unified School District as well as Stanford to make sure that they're on board with that widening. We would also need to begin discussions with Caltrans, who operates and maintains El Camino Real, to make sure they're in agreement with our vision, and then ask for design exemptions on the state side to make this vision happen. But so far, we've kind of gotten visualized that this sticks okay with everybody, including the school district. You see here at Medrono, a new crosswalk that dubs as a, as a speed table, that there's that new trail that would be along the north side of Churchill, along the Pally frontage. At Palo Alto High School-Castileja intersection, we're actually proposing the opposite of what we just proposed at El Camino Real. We're proposing to remove one of the crosswalks, and that would be the crosswalk that's on the east side. And the reason for that is because in the morning, that is such a heavy right turn movement with people trying to get into Pally, and that right turn stacks so much at times that even if you get a green to turn left from Alma, say, coming from Midtown, you can't make the left because it's queued up all the way to the driveway. So some of the really simple things that we're proposing to do here is introduce what we would call an exit ramp. We're not proposing to take the bike lane away so the bike lane could stay, or would stay, but let the bicyclists exit the bike lane ahead of the intersection so we remove that mixture of bike and auto traffic that exists today. So again, a really, really simple, low-cost solution that, you know, if you like, we don't have to wait a year for design. That could be something we could build over the summer, for example. But there was definitely interest in wanting to make sure that if we make this level of investment, that there's also crossing guards that would help manage that traffic, and that's something that we're proposing here for the first time through the program, is the proposal for two new crossing guards to help this intersection operate efficiently. And that might be something that we may see at other intersections, but we know for sure at Castileja and Churchill, we need to do more than just civil improvements. We may need to have people that are there to help kind of guide traffic through the intersection as well as guide pedestrian movements. When there isn't a crossing guard there, there is a lot of activity during other periods of the day, so we had a lot of interest in wanting to make sure that those crosswalks were highly visible. So you see here pedestrian-activated flashing beacon systems being proposed. You see improvements for kind of bulbouts at the intersection. There's a lot of interest in how do people, once they've kind of come from the Embarcadero Trail, how they interact with that driveway across Pally, so we recognize that's still something that needs some more detail, but that we can do. We are proposing some time-of-day parking restrictions along the frontage of Castleja, of Churchill, between Castleja and Miriposa, so that when kids do exit the campus, you know, they really have a much larger space to get towards Alma Street, because, again, we can't fix everything with this one project, but one area that we heard a lot of concern about is that so many kids bike along the north side back to school. When they cross the Caltrain tracks and they're crossing at the Alma intersection, they end up in the wrong direction on the other side of the street. If you've ever been there, 3:00, it's the opposite of what it is in the morning. I mean, kids are just dominating the entire street, so we want to make sure that we're giving options to make it more comfortable, to encourage kids to get on the right side of the street to go home, in this case, the south side of the street, so that hence that green bike lane, you know, the time-of-day parking restrictions to make it really wide and comfortable for kids to ride in clusters. And another area that you'll see here is we're proposing to put in a kind of low decorative rail along the north side of Churchill Avenue, because what we heard a lot of concerns about were people coming from Miriposa and kind of just jumping out in front of traffic on Churchill, trying to get to the Caltrain path. And so this is a really good example of, you know, we're not accommodating all kind of bicycle movements. We're trying, in this case, restrict some practice that we don't want to be seeing in the community that can lead to fairly significant injuries and force people to stay on Castileja, that is the designated Bicycle Boulevard, kind of get them to the trail at the right intersection, then let them kind of connect back out towards the Embarcadero Trail towards downtown. And there was also a lot of interest in wanting to improve the lighting there in the evening hours, so you see these opportunities to add more lighting along the corridor, and that's something that, you know, we didn't mention earlier, but that's another element of Bicycle Boulevard that we definitely wanted to try and take advantage of. If we're going to be making some significant investments in the community for facilities, it's more for than just the daytime. We have to accommodate those uses in the evening, and that's something that we're hearing a lot more recently, that there's interest in wanting to improve lighting when we have that opportunity, and we're trying to do that definitely with this specific project. So again, some of the near-term improvements that we'd look to do would be that for El Camino Way, you know, if you like the sharrows, I would say, "Let's get those things in this spring, you know, by summer the latest, get them ready for the next school year." If you like the bicycle lane, "Let's get the bicycle lane in over the summer at the same period that we need to coordinate with our resurfacing program to kind of get a fresh kind of slurry or resurfacing of the roadway," but that's something that we'd want your policy input on, and then get that done right away if you like that option. Along Maybell Avenue, there is definitely some benefit in some very select time-of-day parking restrictions, so if you're okay with that concept, that might be something that we might want to consider exploring. Those could go in in the next couple of months if we really wanted, but specifically in coming back on Maybell, say, from Gunn towards El Camino Real, the frontage along the homestead back to the orchard, that might be an area where just time-of-day restrictions might make sense, because it's only a small portion of area where parking currently does take place, and we might want to kind of remove that in the near term. And in the opposite direction, going towards Juan de Briones School, you know, there's a lot of parking that takes place and kind of forces bikes out into the path of automobiles, and there was a lot of support in the community to doing select time-of-day restrictions, and that's just signs on poles, you know, 500 bucks a sign and pole, like, why wait? On Churchill Avenue, we talked about the bike ramp exit that would accommodate the westbound bicyclists to get out towards the trail that goes out towards the Pally parking. Again, we don't have to wait, you know, a year through designing construction. That's a $5,000, $7,000 improvement that we could do this year if you like it. The time-of-day restrictions on that south side of the street between Miramonte and Castileja, we could do those as well if you like them. So on the next steps, you know, we, tonight, we need your approval on these projects. The Churchill project is funded 100% through design, so based off of your approval tonight, we'll begin those discussions with Caltrans, and then we'll also begin to move forward on some of the larger design details. But Maybell is not funded through design, it was only funded through concept plan line, so, you know, with your approval, we'd like to come back to you as early as in the next month and a half or two and come back with a negotiated contract to actually complete the design of the Maybell Bicycle Boulevard and see if we can have that ready for either grant competition or some local funding by next calendar year. We'd love your input on some of those kind of near-term improvements that we just talked about earlier, and we would also, this year, begin the environmental assessment for those projects. So with that, that's, again, a quick summary of the two projects. We would ask you to consider approval of those concept plan lines or hear your feedback for improving them.
Thank you very much for the presentation. And had I realized or been more aware of the time, I would have done this before we started this item, but Councilmember Walbach would like to acknowledge a couple of special guests we have this evening.
Thank you for the indulgence from the rest of the council. I'd like to recognize Daniel and Nico, who are two scouts who are here. Thank you for coming, earning your merit badge time and also participating in the public process. Lawmaking and city process is sometimes boring. I appreciate you sitting through it with us. And also, if you'd care to speak with a member of the city clerk staff right over here, he'll provide you with a little memento. Thanks.
Thank you for coming this evening. We're proud to have you here. So with that, we go to councilmembers for your questions. Councilmember DeBois, and then Councilmember Felsif.
It feels like we just talked to you a second ago. So just a couple of quick questions and points. So one thing is, I think El Camino Way, like you said, is heavily parked almost all day long. I commute there in the morning, you know, when the bikes are going through, and it just seems like a really tough street. It's very narrow with cars parked both sides. And I think, you know, if you remove parking on that street, there's a lot of housing, offices, restaurants, I don't know where they go, they're going to go into the neighborhoods and, you know, we'll be looking at residential permits. So one thing is I see the kids do, very few kids actually bike on the street, they all seem to go up on the sidewalk, and I just wonder if you would consider that as an option, particularly, there's not a lot of pedestrian traffic on that short block there, and it seems a lot safer just to get the kids off that street. I don't see on the map, when you get to the end I don't see on the map, when you get to the end of El Camino Way to go to Maybell, I don't see any updates to the crosswalks, and it seems like a very similar situation to El Camino and Churchill.
Thank you, Councilmember DeBois. You, you may not have shown us as much on the, on the graphics, but we've actually done a lot of work at El Camino Way ever since we've started this project, the green bike lanes that we were showing you earlier, those Glassby Project, that's Meadow right at the El Camino Way intersection. And at El Camino Way and James, we actually, we, we pushed forward really quick when we heard concerns from the community about that location, and we, we actually built a crosswalk with, with some ball bouts that extend the sidewalk out into the street and installed a pedestrian activated flashing beacon system with, you know, high-visibility marked crosswalks. So we're, we're trying to do our best, and that was a, probably not a low-hanging fruit that was cheap, but it was, it was a lot of value to the community because of the volume of kids that use that crossing. And then with the El Camino Way and Meadow intersection, there's significant improvements proposed with ball bouts at that intersection.
Right, I'm talking about the intersection with El Camino, I guess.
You know what? This, again, I apologize, I didn't show this to you. So this is the El Camino Way Meadow intersection here. So what we're trying to show here is that we're, you know, texturing and improving these crosswalk facilities.
I think it's one below that, right? Isn't that El Camino?
El Camino Real.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
El Camino Way to El Camino Real, that, that crosswalk seems very similar to Churchill and El Camino Real.
Actually, I should note that if you approve this concept plan line tonight, we will immediately enter into a contract negotiation with Caltrans to improve this intersection along with the intersection at Charleston-Arastradero Road. So we would want to design those two together.
Okay, so it wasn't shown on the plans, but there would be changes there. Cool. The other one, my son does bike almost all the time to Gunn, but on the rare occasion I drive him, we do go down to the Georgia pathway there.
Don't do it.
And, yeah, it's bad, there's a lot of cars, not very many pedestrians, though. And I am, I saw a letter in here from the person whose driveway is across the street. I mean, the, the crosswalk there does seem a little odd, there's not a lot of pedestrians, it's mostly bikes pouring into that path. So I don't know if you had a response to, I don't know if you saw the letter, but...
We, we did see the letter from the community and, and, you know, to thank everyone at home for providing some input on that concept. Again, that, that crossing of Georgia to the Gunn Spur Path, hundreds of kids use that, you know, during the day. And so the concept we're having here is we're really trying to address two issues. One is to make sure that when kids are coming out of the path, and they aren't looking, you know, whether that's right or wrong, kids aren't always paying attention to the traffic that's coming down Georgia. So that, that raised crosswalk slash table is really intended to try and address the issue that we know automobiles may not pay attention to when kids are coming out, we're trying to get everyone to slow down at that intersection. And so I would probably say it's still something that we have to work out through more of the design phase, but the concept that we need to focus and approve at that intersection is really what we're showing here. And we, we took a stab in that graphic that I showed you earlier about what that might look like. I can't say that's what it'll look like when it gets built, but I think that's the right path.
Yeah, I think the idea of the speed table makes a lot of sense, it's just the pedestrian signs and crossing, it's really bikes kind of going in there. On the Churchill, just a really quick question, those side paths, are those actually on school property? Are those...
Yes, yeah, so there, that, that's why I mentioned earlier that we would need to enter some discussions with PAUSD regarding how far we can approach in. There's obviously also some utilities that need to get relocated as part of this trail concept coming to fruition. But concept plan line stage, we're just trying to show where it would be and then work out the civil details over the next few months as we, or several months as we wrap up the design.
And my last question is like, what's the process? These changes go in, is, is there a testing and tweaking period?
That is more of the design phase, you know, I, I think at one point, we have to build something, we could always make changes and, and, you know, simple things like signage and striping, we could change those quickly after construction. But things like, you know, curb and gutter, those are definitely more costly, so we want to make sure that we spend time and soliciting public input during that design phase because those are much harder to change later.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Philseth.
Thanks, I, I have a question and a comment. And my question's on, so first of all, thank you for leaving the stop signs on Maybell. The El Camino Way, that street is really narrow, right? And so my question is, is there really room for a bike lane on that street, right? I mean, how, how wide is the street? Why don't you put a bike lane in there?
Thank you, Councilmember Philseth. Yes, we can squeeze bicycle lanes in one, in one direction, but that's at the, that's at the sacrifice of we narrow down the travel lane, and we also narrowed down slightly the parking lane. And so we're not proposing a widening of the corridor, that would be, you know, not that it's cost prohibitive, but it would have some other ramifications. And so in this specific case, the travel lanes that you're seeing there are at about nine and a half feet in width by putting the bicycle lane in. And that's got pluses and minuses. The plus is it also forces cars to drive slower, and where we've done that in the rest of Palo Alto, that's worked out really well for us. But to put in a comfortable bike lane, that if I remember correctly, is a six-foot wide bike lane, which is comfortable width.
Yeah, you need, you need adequate width to put a, right, so. So, so how, so if it's nine and a half feet, the, the street lane now, what does it go to after you put the bike lane in?
So again, the width of the street from Curta-Curta doesn't change, I don't have that number.
No, no, I understand, but the width of the driving lane between the, the center line and the, and the bike lane?
So the, the travel lanes today are actually closer to 12 to 13 feet.
Oh.
And so we're taking that space and narrowing it down to nine and a half.
I see, okay. And it looks to me from your picture like the parking lane will still be there, so they're not, so, on, on one chart, it says that there's time-of-day restrictions on parking from 6:00 to 9:00. And, but it looks to me from your picture like the parking row is still there. So you've still got a full parking space and then the bike lane and then the nine-and-a-half foot street lane, is that, is that right?
That's correct. And actually, the reason we're showing it that way is because we already put in some time-of-day parking restrictions along El Camino Way between James and El Camino Real, so those restrictions are already in. And we wanted to leave the option for during the design phase to talk about, can we extend those time-of-day restrictions all the way to Meadow? But we would need to study the ramifications of that to the points of some of the earlier councilmember's comments.
Yep, yep. Okay. Okay. And then my comment was on the intersection that drive into, from Churchill into Pali, Pali High, which I just, you know, I think moving the crosswalk and putting in the right cutoff into Pali, I think that's a great idea, okay? I mean, I make that turn, I'm always afraid of right hooking some cyclist, right? I think, you know, what you've done there, I love, right? So, thanks.
Councilmember Sharf.
Thank you. I just wanted to understand what you're asking us to do tonight. So you're asking us to approve moving forward on the Maybell and the Churchill, but, and if we approve it, it's the preliminary environmental assessment for the Maybell through conceptual plan to line development only for Maybell? So what does that mean?
So for, what we're asking you guys to do tonight is, is give us your thoughts on, on the concept plan lines, and I think definitely Churchill looks a little bit more refined than, say, Maybell does, but that's because we need more time to work out the specific design for Maybell. I think for Maybell, we're saying that we have two options. We have a very simple option, just adding sharrows and doing nothing else, and that's one option. Or that could just be the near-term option, but the, the long-term option for Maybell can be the concept of putting in that kind of stamped or colored asphalt area that is not a sidewalk, but definitely is clearly defined space for motorists. And that's something that there was a lot of interest in from Barron Park, not just for this street, but for a lot of the streets in the Barron Park neighborhood. So it could definitely serve as a kind of trial or model for future deployment use and use around the city. And so we're asking you guys to tonight is tell us your thoughts. Do you like just the sharrow option? Do you want us to implement that right away while we work out the design refinement of kind of the stamped asphalt color treatment? Or do you just hate those ideas altogether? And tell us, you want to tell us to go back to the drawing board?
So, coming back to this, just take Churchill, for instance. The motion would look something like, you know, approve the Churchill, you know, Avenue Enhanced Bike Way, and then you'd move forward and, and would do everything through construction because you don't have money for construction or you do have money...
Not for Churchill, no.
Not for Churchill, no, just design. But then you talk about near-term improvements and that we could do these right away in the summer. And so my confusion is, is are we supposed to vote to say, yes, let's do these three near-term improvements and, you know, go find the funding for it? Or are we not doing that tonight?
If you like those near-term improvements, we will do them over the summer, you just need to tell us, you know, that's...
And maybe you could just run through those near-term improvements on Churchill again?
So for Churchill Avenue, it would include the construction of this bicycle exit ramp right here where the cursor is. And it would also include the parking restrictions on the south side of Churchill between Castaleja and Mariposa.
All right, so it's just those two things?
Yeah.
Okay. And so then everything else would be designed as you show it there, but we wouldn't have funding, but we'd do those two near-term improvements. Okay. And on Maybell, are there near-term improvements you're talking about doing as well?
So on Maybell, the, as part as the El Camino Way section, we, we would propose to implement either the sharrow option or that southbound green bike lane, which would narrow the lanes on El Camino Way to the nine-and-a-half feet.
So the policy choice tonight is, do we want to do anything, give you authority to do any near-term improvement on Maybell? And those two choices are a do nothing, put a sharrow, or do a southbound bike lane? Is that correct?
On El Camino Way.
On El Camino Way.
Yeah, and the other near-term improvement for the Maybell project could be very select time-of-day restrictions where we would just open up the roadway for use by bikes and pets.
Okay, so in moving into, I mean, to be honest with me, the Churchill ones seem easy to say yes to. I mean, I, I don't think there's much community opposition to that or concern about it. I'm unclear on the Maybell one, how the community feels, because you also have with additional outreach to affected residents. So is it too early to say, go ahead and do the, the parking restrictions? Or, because if we tell you to do it and you do the outreach and people are unhappy, we've then told you to do it, so I'm...
Well, if, if you give us the direction to go out there and do it, and we will start that community outreach, meaning that we'll knock on people's doors and kind of walk them through what we're proposing, if there's strong opposition, we won't do it, but when we come back to you in the design phase, we'll let you know why, and likely because the residents didn't support it. Now, again, that, that's one of those options, though, though, that, you know, I think we need to respect kind of their input right away and then figure out, well, how can we make an improvement in the near term, meaning maybe over the next year? And that could be an option that a lot of people liked, but it does have a very direct impact to select few residents. And so I think rather than just shove it down their throat, because we talked about it tonight without their discussion, we need more time to refine the design concept, work on hours of restrictions with those neighbors, and then try and implement that right away. And if we can't do it before summer, you know, we would, we would be diligent in working with those residents, maybe over the next several months.
Okay, so then, the only, can we, can we see the map for the Churchill one? So I like everything you're doing on Churchill, I, I just am still a little confused of, when I come across the intersection, right, I'm, I'm, you know, down there on Churchill before I cross Alma, right? I'm on my bike, I'm on the side of the street that Pali's on, right? So I'm on the other side of Alma, it's not, you know, not on your map, right? Right there, I'm right there, right? So I cross the street. Now, I want to take this bicycle path and I want to get on it, and I either want to go, I guess, I give you two choices, I want to go to downtown, go behind, or maybe with the new connection, I want to go up to the El Camino, you know, the new Stanford Trails project, and I go down that way. Where do I get to join that trail without having to stop my bike or wobble it through the little things I think I wobble it through right now is what I do? Where's that smooth transition?
In this specific drawing, if you're in the bike lane coming from the Alma Caltrain tracks here, your, your first point in this drawing would be to take the same exit ramp and then loop back out towards downtown.
No one is going to do that. You know that.
I hear you, I hear you, man. And so the other thing we're considering is introducing a, another type of ramp before that location. But we, we're trying to, again, note that this was a big concern for people, people coming from Mariposa, traveling across Churchill, and then getting to the path. So one option could be that we, you know, this will work in the long term, but we could do a second one closer. We would also, if you're on the sidewalk, which is what most people do in the direction that you're noting, most people are already on the sidewalk, we're proposing this little kind of paved section that will connect people back towards the Barca de Ojo Road.
So is that what you're going to do? Because that makes sense, and I come up on the sidewalk, I mean, that's a fine solution. I would come up on the sidewalk and then you have a little turnaround there that I can then join the trail there, right?
So we could do that this summer if you like it.
I would like that. But how, so if I would like that this summer, how would I, would I say, what would I say to put that in a motion? I would say, do the little what?
That's a friendly, friendly amendment.
All right. I'll let someone else talk.
Very can-do, Jaime.
Thank you.
Councilmember Niss.
Oh, Greg, that's a hard act to swallow. Okay, so, so let's just get redundant here, Jaime. Most people cross just as Councilmember Sharf just said, just where you're pointing that arrow. So they're going to cross over, and I'm not going to be one of them anyway. I want to tell you, at 8:00 AM, I am not going to be riding any bike across Alma. So, but, but let's say that I, you know, have a foolhardy day. I get to the, if I want to go toward Pali, that's easy, okay? Turn and, and you're going to head north. But the green line is what's confusing to me because I thought that was your new bike route.
Thank you, Councilmember Niss. So this green...
Is the green your new bike route or not?
That would be for going east, that'd be going back towards Alma.
Ah, so only, so we're going to have, have dueling bike lanes?
And actually, there actually is existing, an existing bike lane there today, at least on the north side of the street.
Yes, I know it, yeah.
And so this, this would actually add an extended to the track.
It's the one where the police park in order to get you in the morning if you forget and cross there, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so now, now I see what you're doing. And I, I want to make sure now, when I get, so now I've gotten to essentially up to El Camino, which is not on this one yet. But once I've gotten to El Camino, which is always a pileup of cars there, because you can't turn right now, you cannot turn to the right, and you're indicating that will happen.
That's correct, Councilmember Niss. This plan puts in a brand-new right turn lane that, that starts right past the driveway to the school district offices.
Yes, I, I can well imagine where that is. Okay, that, that, that really helps. Now, several other questions, though, that I think are pertinent. We have several jurisdictions. El Camino is, is Caltrans. If we are doing improvements on El Camino, does Caltrans pay for them or do we pay, end up paying for them?
So Caltrans doesn't pay for anything. You know, if we want it, you know, we have to...
We want it, we buy it.
Lead that design, we have to find the money.
Okay, that's, it's, that's good to know. All right, in, in addition to that, also on that same path of who pays for what, I see many places in town that I think would benefit from crossing lights. I can think of four or five right now. What does it take to get crossing lights? One I would suggest, and I'll bet the mayor would as well, is near the women's club, where, where people who are not always, you know, comfortable crossing may have some kind of advice to help them, but, but there is nothing there to indicate that that is a frequent crossing. How do we go about getting lights? Do we need to petition? What, what, what does one need to do? Because people ask me about that, you know, I walk a lot, and people ask me about that frequently.
Thank you, Councilmember Niss, and actually, thank you for bringing up that issue. If people are just at a new crosswalks or lights to enhance existing crosswalks or new crosswalks with lights, they just need to ask, you know, you know, contact me, contact the Transportation Division. You know, I'll be really honest, we try not to make things so complicated. You know, if a crosswalk makes sense, we'll just add it. You know, we handle a lot of little things like that you never see at the council, because there's no point for you to see, at least in my perspective, just across. If we can do it, we'll do it. The enhanced crosswalks, the flashing beacons, you know, we have funds every year that we set aside to do those specific types of improvements, and so if the lights make sense, we'll add them in. We want to justify it later on, we'll do a little bit more analysis, you know, take some counts and document those for the record, you know, but we'll just get them in if you ask.
So that's very helpful, because I think you'll get a number of requests.
I'm sure I'll get a lot tomorrow.
So, and once again, a question that I think often comes up, if there is not a crosswalk, and one that I can think of frequently, because I walk Cowper a lot, if you want to get a cross Cowper, a cross in Embarcadero, you do take your life in your hands, there's no question. When you are crossing at what appears to be a crosswalk, but it is not marked, I thought state law said that was still a crosswalk.
That is correct. If you approach an intersection, the crosswalk does not need to be marked for it to be defined as a legal crosswalk. You have that right to enter. You know, you, as a pedestrian, you need to adhere to rules of the road as well, you don't want to just jump into the, the street, you need to wait for a gap and move across. I think what we try to do is make sure that there are adequately spaced, you know, safe facilities, whether those are traffic signals or these types of beacons that we're seeing more around town. We'll add those facilities where we can, but, you know, from a cost perspective, they're difficult to apply everywhere in Palo Alto, and they, you know, to be honest with you, most residents might not like them right in front of their house either.
But, but I am correct. Where you have an intersection, that is an implied crosswalk.
That's right.
I wouldn't suggest doing it at Cowper and Embarcadero regardless. So I think what that does is cover the questions with one final one. Where the county has jurisdiction on the expressways, do they actually pay, or once again, is that our problem? Is that our, is that our commitment?
You know, our friends at the county are really easy to work with. I think they take a...
Much more generous than the state, right?
Much more generous. If they have the money and they can do it, they'll do it. You know, if, if we need to help them with design or construction, we have in the past.
I would have guessed that that would, that would be the issue. Okay, thanks very much. That, that really does address a number of the issues that I had. Thank you.
Councilmember Burke.
So first, on the crossing beacons or lights, I want to support that Jaime is responsive. Folks in my neighborhood requested a beacon crosswalk at Hopkins and Newell by the Rinconada Library, and came in real promptly, and I know everybody thinks it's a great addition. Wanted to go to Churchill next, and one of the things that you pointed out was that on these potential time-of-day restrictions for the south side of Churchill between Castile and the tracks, right? That you still have to engage the neighbors there and, and see what happens there. So this is something that might apply to this location and elsewhere in the city, where we basically, real estate on our streets is at a real premium if we're trying to either add bike lanes or make them a bit wider and safer. And, and it's just, you know, you've got trade-offs. But something that's occurred to me a number of places is that we have some locations in the city where we have wider parking strips than others. And is there any restriction from us being able to reduce the width of the parking strip as an alternative to, say, a time-of-day restriction on parking? And you're kind of doing something like that on Maybell with, but not with curbs, right?
That's right, yeah. The, it's really not, there's no restriction, it's really a policy decision. I think in some areas, it's just a matter, we just have to have that discussion and propose the concepts to you like we are tonight.
And I was trying to recall and look at, under Google Maps tonight, but it looked to me like that parking strip on the south side of Churchill is wider than normal. Maybe it's because it's merging with the tracks. So I would, if, I don't know if you need this in a motion when we get to that tonight, but I'd at least encourage that to be part of the consideration, especially when you talk with the neighbors. And neighbors may say, hey, I'd rather have time of day than lose some of the parking strip, too. So, but, but we give them some choices. And the same thing may apply on the north side of Churchill, and whether the school district would consent to moving that curb back a little bit. Because that bike lane, regardless of what we do on the south side, that's a narrow bike lane, and I want to point out an existing problem that Asamun talked about tonight. It was mentioned that we have ticketing of cars who go to Churchill during the commute hour illegally, and it's very frequently ticketed. And I know this isn't your jurisdiction, but it intersects with what you're doing. The problem is, the police department is pulling over cars into the bike lane and fully blocking the bike lane with cars there, it just makes it a danger for bicyclists, for them to do an action that's intended to make it safer for bicyclists. And I had been meaning to bring this up, I've seen it now two or three times, and it just completely, they stop and ticket, and, and as Councilmember Schaff had noted, you're stuck in that bike lane when you get off there. So I, I will add that I think an entry point to get over to the bike path from near the tracks is important, but I also think we need to address this other thing. They don't, I don't know if there's some reason they can't pull into Pally Lot, and there's space there to ticket the folks or whatever. So both sides of Churchill, it might be possible, and this may be a model for elsewhere, is do we pick up two or three feet by moving curbs back, and those two, three feet go to the bike lanes? And otherwise, I don't know where we're going to create that real estate. Then on Maybell, I saw in the staff report that on Donald and Georgia, we're not looking at using greenback sheros out of sensitivity to kind of the neighborhood character. We had at least one neighbor who raised that request for Maybell. How important are the greenback sheros versus white sheros, say, on Maybell, if there are neighborhood concerns? And I guess the second part to this is, is that still part of the discussion that you would intend to have with the neighbors, or has that been determined in your mind?
Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Yeah, I think, you know, it was more than one neighbor that definitely expressed the concern about the greenback sheros along Donald and Georgia. Several residents did, and we had our community meetings, a lot of people echoed, I don't live here, but I agree with these people that, you know, I wouldn't want that in front of my house either. And so I think for now, we're not recommending the greenback sheros. I think that's something that just, we try to respect that input from people that we got, and so we'd ask you to consider that as part of this concept plan line. The, I'm sorry, the second part of your question was?
Well, in essence, your answer was, the second part was whether, if you were planning to go forward, is this still something you'd be intending to have discussions with the neighborhood on? And I think you've answered that.
Okay.
So my final question is around signage, and I certainly have found strategic signage to be valuable. But I'm starting to see some signage proliferation bordering on, well, I can, I'll give you one example of signage pollution. And so that was another issue that was raised by some of the neighbors on Maybell to make sure that the signage we have is only what we really strategically need and not overkill. And I'll give you the example, it's outside of this, but I just ran across it the other day, and I was blown away. As you come from 101 on Embarcadero, in the north side or west side of Embarcadero, right after you cross, what's the first stoplight there?
St. Francis.
St. Francis. There are suddenly, to my knowledge, pretty recently, I hadn't noticed them, six no parking signs within 75 yards. They're just like one after another. No red curb, which is another way to communicate, but it's like six signs right in a row. I encourage you to go check it out as the poster child of, of overdoing the signage. And that may not have anything to do, even with your department, maybe, Public Works, I don't know where it came from, but I really encourage, go check it out. And it kind of was jarring to me, and, and I'm not somebody who's hypersensitive on the signage, I just want you to know that. So overall, this is really exciting to see these projects, and we look forward to the next wave coming forward, and I'll look forward to colleagues to incorporate these specifics in the motion.
So we have Councilmember Berman and Vice Mayor Schmidt who still want to speak to this item. We had advertised the item to conclude at 8:45, it's now after 9:00. So with colleagues indulgent, I'd like to go to three members of the public who submitted their, their cards, Penny Elson, to be followed by Judd Velino.
Hi, I'm Penny Elson, I live at 513 El Capitan Place. I'm, Judd Velino just left, he's the Pally Traffic Safety Rep. And I incorporated, I called him this afternoon and incorporated some of his comments in the letter that I sent to you today. I wonder if councilmembers saw it? Yes, no? Okay, well, since some of you did not, I will read parts of it. Let's see, I want to say thank you, first of all, to the, to staff for the great work that they're doing, rolling out the Bike Boulevard program, including these projects, and for the outreach that they've done to the City School Traffic Safety Committee on this. Let's see, I have a couple of questions. One of them regarding funding has already been answered this evening. Let's see. Alternatives for the, on Maybell, the alternatives for the Thane to Donald segment depict either sheros in both directions or sheros in one direction with a shared-use path the other direction. I like the shared-use path very much. It responds to requests we've heard, really for years, at the City School Traffic Safety Committee from neighborhood residents and Juana Breones Elementary School parents in particular, about the need for better pedestrian accommodations on the Maybell school route. The shared-use path also would provide space for bicyclists, as it's planned, to move out of the way of drivers, which is also needed on this very narrow street. However, I don't think that the shared-use path by itself goes far enough. During the morning school commute time, there were very large packs of adolescent bicyclists, many, sometimes as many as 30 or 40 at a time in a group. And they use the Maybell corridor to get to Gunn and Turman, and when these packs encounter pedestrians on that future shared-use path, they'll be required to yield to those pedestrians. Now, mind you, this is like 30 or 40 kids all together all at once. So stopping is not, stopping hard and fast unexpectedly, not an option, right? Because the people in back of you are going to mow you down, which will require the bicyclists to move off the path into the roadway. So I think sheros are actually needed in both directions, along with the new shared-use path. This'll tell drivers, first of all, to expect bicyclists to take a lane at this location. I view the shared-use path primarily as an accommodation for pedestrians. A sidewalk would be great, but it seems impossible at this point. Sheros in two directions would make the path safer for pedestrians, and will help the corridor work better for all modes of transportation. It'll help motorists, too, really, to give the bicyclists a little flexibility about where to move. I'd be very interested in hearing staff's thoughts on this idea. We haven't, we did not have that conversation at the City School Traffic Safety Committee, because it didn't occur to me until this weekend. Regarding Churchill, I like this idea very much, and I just want to say for, for Judd, who sadly had to leave, oh, sorry, I'll sum up really quickly. Both of us are concerned that what happens right now is Pally bicyclists use what's called the stadium path, that's on, as they're exiting the Pally driveway, they, they use the stadium path, which, and they turn left onto the existing multi-use trail that connects to the Alma-Churchill intersection, and that maneuver puts them in the wrong place on the road, the wrong side of the road when they get to the Alma intersection. I like the new Castileja intersections typing. It'll encourage bicyclists to properly exit the Pally driveway so they can, you know, get to that intersection on the right side of the road. But both Judd and I feel that it would be very helpful if the school district did something with that driveway to get the bicyclists on the right side of that driveway, so that they can get to this terrific new movement that staff has designed here. And obviously, this isn't a decision that you can make, but I just want to, to the folks who are on the City School Liaison Committee, this may be one of those things where we approach the school district to work with us in partnership. Thank you.
And thank you. And our other speaker this evening is Robert Neff.
Well, first, I wanted to thank you for the new system of putting out meeting materials 10 days ahead. It's, it's really nice to, to see things long, further ahead, it's really terrific. Let's see, I was going to make a comment about Churchill, but I think Penny pretty much said what I was going to say. The new, the new treatment on Churchill looks very strong to me, especially for kids leaving Pally, except right now, the kids leaving Pally don't really leave directly from the exit driveway. So I think if, when the city can work with the schools to, to look at rearranging that, then, then it will all work better together, and then it'll be a lot safer for the kids that'll leave out of the exit driveway and end up on Churchill. The other thing I wanted to mention was the El Camino Way section. I bicycle up, I've been bicycling up Meadow, I figured, 18 years now, and six years watching my kids go up to Gunn High School. And what happens at Meadow and El Camino Way is, the kids who are turning left, they just decide whatever they're, they want to do, based on, really, they observe that it's kind of stressful to go in the street right now. And so a lot of them go straight onto the sidewalk, as Councilmember DeWort mentioned. And, you know, bicyclists will go to the place that they're comfortable riding. And the, the problem with sending them all onto the sidewalk is it's really not safe for anyone who wants to get out of their car and get into Starbucks if you have 20 bicyclists going by at the same time in the sidewalk. So this plan presents a better way for, for bicyclists to find a less stressful way to get up El Camino Way towards, towards Gunn. And also then, on the way home, one thing that happens is that when you're heading back towards the train tracks on Meadow, you can turn right on James. So even though this plan would narrow the, the street on, on El Camino Way, someone who wants a less stressful route can actually turn off at James and not have to ride on that part of Meadow. The other thing about El Camino Way is it's already fairly narrow, so you end up taking the lane, and so as a bicyclist with a narrower lane, it's going to be pretty much the same situation for bicyclists going northbound on that. So I like all these options, and I'm really happy to see the, the way things have, have changed as the consultants and the city staff has worked with the community to really come up with a good plan. Thanks.
Thank you. And actually, we do have one more speaker, Bob Moss.
Thank you, Mayor Hillman, and councilmembers. Some aspects of El Camino Way and Maybell that are unusual, and I think they all ought to be taken into account. As you've heard before, El Camino Way is quite narrow, and one of the problems is, there's a office and housing condo project between Camino Court and El Camino, which is very heavily parked. The parking for that site is off Camino Way, underground garage, and most people don't know it exists. So no matter what time of the day or night you drive down there, the street is parked up almost totally on both sides, resulting in a very narrow street. So putting in a bike lane, or even sheros, is going to make it difficult for bikes to share it with, with the cars. I'm not saying it's not going to happen, but I'm just saying it's, it's a problem. Maybell, as a result of, you know, it was a residential street five years ago, and as a result of narrowing Arrasadero, traffic on Maybell went from about 2,700 trips a day to about 3,400. And it's become a bypass for traffic coming off El Camino and coming off Arrasadero. And those drivers are just not very thoughtful and careful going through residential neighborhood. El Camino Way is about 25 feet wide. Maybell is 29 feet at Clemo. So if you put in a four-foot bike lane on either side of Maybell, that leaves you with a net, probably 12-foot driving lane. Now, the new law that was passed recently, when it's effect, says if you're passing bikes, you have to be three feet away, which means on a 12-foot wide street, you're basically in the center lane, not too good. So there are going to be some real problems with anything that's done there. My suggestion is that whatever you think will work should be done on a trial basis for about six months. And what should be done is do a complete traffic count, bikes, pedestrians, and autos, during the entire day, from, say, 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, on both El Camino Way and Maybell in Donald and Georgia, in Culo. And then put in your traffic improvements, do the traffic counts again, and do it for several times over a six-month period. Then step back and see what works. And if there are problems along that section, change what's been done and try it again. Because I'm really afraid that whatever goes in there, no matter how carefully we think it's going to work, it's going to create problems. And so I'd like to see it tried and carefully studied, so that we understand better where we're going and how we can get out of any problems.
Thank you. Councilmember Berman.
Thank you very much. So I want to give Jaime a chance to respond if he had any thoughts on Penny Elson's questions or comments in regards to either the double sheros on, on Maybell, where it looks like we have them for a lot of the stretch, but not for the whole thing. Have you had any comments on the Churchill, I have a suggestion?
Thank you, Councilmember Berman. Yeah, the, the point that Penny had raised about... Yeah, the, the point that Penny had raised about kind of how we sign or mark, one, the multi-use pathway is one that we haven't tried to address yet, but I think Penny is right on in that it is something that we would need to do, beyond just kind of marking with color and texture what that pathway looks like. We also need to sign it and mark it so bikes and pedestrians are in the right position. And doing sharos next to that, I think, are a great idea, and that's something we could definitely put into the design phase.
Is there, have you guys heard anything yet in the, in the community conversations you've had that would give you reason to pause about that? Or, I mean, it looks like there are sharos in most of that stretch anyhow on both sides. So, so I'd say, I mean, and, and the side that doesn't have them right now seems to be mostly commercial on that side anyhow. So, you know, it seems like it would make sense to me also. I guess it's residential on one side of El Camino and commercial on, on El Camino Way. If we're talking about doubling it up on El Camino Way also, I'm not sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Berman. I did want to just note for, also for Bob's input, the curb-to-curb width of El Camino Way is forty feet. So the cross-section that you're seeing up there is a seven-foot parking lanes, which is what we've done in other areas where we're trying to move space out towards another use, like a bike lane, two ten-foot lanes, I said nine and a half earlier, so I was wrong, and a six-foot bike lane.
Great. Thank you. So I also, I think the changes that you're making on Churchill are fantastic. I have not-so-fond memories of when I, when I went to Paly of coming out and going right on Churchill and trying to go right on El Camino and, and just watching in sad envy at everyone who had SUVs and pickup trucks who'd just hop onto the median anyhow and, and do that because there was nothing but a kind of dirt strip there anyways. And they'd, they'd, they made a right turn lane where one didn't exist. Those of us in our moms' hand-me-down Volvos didn't, didn't quite have that option. But, but it definitely, now, this would be taking some of the, that property from, I mean, we'd have to kind of encroach into the PAUSD property, is that correct?
It is actually Stanford land.
Oh, okay.
And so we'd be in negotiations with both Stanford and PAUSD.
Okay. But, but it's really not being used for anything right now, any of, of much consequence, right? So hopefully, hopefully that won't be too difficult. Can you, so we talked a little bit about funding earlier, and forgive me, but I've forgotten what our plan was on how we're going to fund the, so there's already funding for the Churchill improvements in the CIPs, in the, in the City CIP that we currently have on the books, but not for the Maybell, is that correct?
That's correct, Councilmember Berman. So the, the contract to the consultant, Alta Planning and Sandis Engineering that did this concept online, they're funded through design. They're really just waiting for authorization to move into the next phase of design, and that's what we're here for tonight. Maybell was only funded through the stage that you're seeing it right now.
Yep.
So we would need to renegotiate negotiations with that consultant and bring that contract back to you to do the full design for Maybell based off of the comments you gave us tonight.
Any planning on doing that through our regular budget process or with the budget amendment?
We would actually propose, I'm sorry to cut you off, Councilmember Berman.
No, that's great.
We would propose to actually use the funding that's in the bicycle pedestrian implementation plan. So we, you know, if you recall, and for the people at home, the council took a really great approach in trying to expedite the implementation of this plan and funded one point two million dollars per year for five years. We haven't used a lot of that money in this first year because we had funded so many of it, so much, so many of the projects in the year prior. And so we would use that money to fund the next phase of the Maybell project.
Okay, great. And there's no reason that you'd be, I mean, you're not going to be held up in terms of your, your timeline on, on any approvals from us, will you? I guess I would just say I'd encourage you to come back as quickly as you need to, to get that funding to move forward when you're ready. Thanks.
If, if I can, just a quick one. I wanted to respond to one other comment that Penny had raised.
Please.
And that was the issue of when people are coming, students are coming out of Paly, trying to get them to use the other side of the street. I think that was also a comment that Councilmember Niss was referring to earlier. Let me just explain something to people at home. It's pretty amazing what kids do when they see those green bicycle lanes. You know, you could be, they could be approaching a street and be all over the place in a parking lane, in the travel lane, in the bike lane. But then when they get to the green bike lane, it's like a funnel. They just, they all stay in it, and the automobiles respect it. And so, you know, I, I'm hopeful that when something like this were to move forward, that we'd be getting to see that change. It's not inviting today, remember, most kids just stay on kind of the sidewalk that exists today, but it's not inviting to be on the south side either because it's blocked by parking. So, you know, these little changes, we hope, will actually create a change in the mindset of the students. Part of that is an education on our part, you know, and making sure that, you know, we encourage kids to use that.
No, that's great. Hopefully it does work, and if it doesn't, we can come up with new ideas then. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Schmidt.
Let's see, just a couple brief questions. Some letters that we got talked about taking away parking spa- on Maybell, taking away parking spaces in front of a handicapped school at Aloney. These kids, I guess, need special attention in transport to school. Is that, is that something in the plan that you've been thinking about, or what's your stance on that?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor Schmidt. So, so this is the frontage of Juana Bionis School. This is Maybell Avenue. Here's Amoranta. Here's Kulo. And this is kind of the, what I would call more the back entry into Juana Bionis School.
Right.
And this is where the special education activities that do currently exist take place. So the area we're referring to for time-of-day parking restrictions is actually just to the west of Amoranta. That's the area that when kids kind of really kind of cross the street between here and Kulo, students begin to split off into different ways. This is the area where we would immediately look for a near-term parking restriction implementation that would not affect the operations that take place at the school. There's definitely some interest in wanting to do something similar kind of west of that, kind of coming out towards, towards the Donald area, but we weren't looking to do that as part of that near-term phase.
And that would not interfere with the people tending to the right lane to drop off their kids?
Well, if it is a parking restriction, then, you know, it's a parking restriction even for drop-off activities, and that's, so, no, you would not be able to park there to load in and unload.
But, I mean, would there then be bunches of kids on their bikes in that lane?
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Schmidt, say that again?
If you take off the parking restrictions to the east, kids on their bikes going to Gunn will take over that lane.
That's right.
So cars from the center trying to get into the restricted parking area would have to battle through a line of bikes, is that right?
Well, that's kind of what happens today. So it's more that if we implement the restrictions, we would definitely need to work with the school district to make sure that we're working with them and their parents, parents to make sure that they're actually using other driveway alternatives on campus to drop off their students.
Yeah, just so you're sensitive to that issue. Other people pointed out the columns of kids on their bikes going in different directions, the primary school people going to Bionis and the Gunn people going to Gunn and coming to intersections where in packs they have a hard time wending their way through. Would this make sense to have a crossing guard or something at that intersection?
Yeah, definitely. There's some intersections where, you know, we can support operations with crossing guards, that would make sense. Here at Amoranta, which is one of those locations, I think, you were referring to, you know, we don't have crossing guard, but we do have the crossing guard at Kulo. And so if we need to expand kind of that interest, we could definitely do that as part of this project. We could take that feedback tonight with us and consider that as part of the design.
Yeah, it might be helpful to look and see if some alive crossing guard could make a difference. Third area is El Camino Way. I think people have brought that up repeatedly tonight as one of the key points. I mean, obviously, our east-west corridors are very limited. They have both a commute and major students crossing. It's a fairly narrow street. Seems to me, just glancing at it, that you have both the morning commute and the morning kids, bicyclists at the same time, that the bike lane should be on the kids going south rather than coming home north in the evening where there's, they're not during commute hours, that the bike lane would provide them a better pathway through that. I thought Bob Moss made a, a good point that data, you know, how many cars are there during rush hour? How many kids are there? Do they come in clumps? Do the cars spread out evenly? You know, what, what happens? That could be a place where just data might be very helpful in, in making the tough decisions you have. Final question, I guess you are dealing with a right turn lane from Churchill onto El Camino. There's, you're dealing with a, a bulb out on El Camino Way and El Camino, and you talked about the Charleston-Arastodaro, you're changing the right turn. Now, the, last week, we had the VTA come in with their BRT proposal, which sets up bus stops just past the intersections. Now, what kind of conflict might there be if increasing number of BRT buses are stopped in that third lane backing up traffic and cutting the right turn flow? Would that back up into the kids trying to cross the streets as well as traffic? What, how do you deal with this double change?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Schmidt. In regards to the VTA and the Bus Rapid Transit or BRT project that would move through the Charleston-Arastodaro and Maybell intersections, that's actually one project that could actually support the implementation of these facility, these, these improvements that we're envisioning across both Charleston and El Camino Way, Maybell. And we've already had those preliminary discussions with the VTA in the, to say that, hey, regardless of what form we end up building BRT in the future, you know, they recognize that these are two very significant improvement or crossings for Palo Alto, and they, they've committed to come up and work with us on a really good design and help implement it if, if it gets implemented with our project.
Okay, yeah, I'm just concerned about if the bus is stopping, loading, unloading for a period of time, which cuts off right turns during the few moments they can make them.
So I think that when the bus stop, it would actually be on the far side of the intersection, so it wouldn't block right turns off of El Camino Real, but, you know, maybe from the side street onto El Camino Real, that, that could happen.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's something that we need to work out as part of the design.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all this heavy lifting. I appreciate that. And just a couple of three questions. One refers back to a comment I made earlier about Parks and Rec Commission, and I'm referring to the improvements along Churchill, and I do view a number of these as definitely improvements. Castelaya has, going onto Castelaya from Churchill, it looks like there are dedicated bike access there. Can you describe exactly what's happening at that intersection on the south side onto Castelaya in addition to the crosswalk?
Thank you, Mayor Holman. So what we're proposing here is a, is a, is a bulb out on what I'm going to call the southwest corner of the, of the intersection where the crosswalk would continue to support a crosswalk to the north side. And so we'd be kind of bumping out that sidewalk space where pedestrians would wait to cross the street, where a crossing guard would potentially guide them. And we would have, you know, more, more green space. We'd want to make sure that has kind of some landscaping to support it, make sure it looks kind of context-sensitive to the community. On the other side of the street, you know, we weren't proposing any type of a bulb out there, just kind of simple ramp improvements to make sure that those are ADA compliant. And then the, just the one flashing beacon or the two flashing beacons across Churchill.
So comments have been, been made earlier about El Camino Way being very narrow. Castelaya is really narrow. And so, so I guess my question is, can that street really tolerate that kind of bulb out that would further, you know, narrow the street, at least at that corner? And the part of this that references an earlier comment is bicyclists use any of these streets in South Gate to get to Pierce Park and to cut through from Park, Park Boulevard up to Churchill. So this hasn't gone to Parks and Rec, and I'm wondering if it shouldn't before you finally do this. And is your intention or your thinking, does it include Pierce Park and that access and the continuation from Park Boulevard up through South Gate Neighborhood? And had you thought about recommending one street for bicyclists as opposed to any of the others? Because bicyclists right now do use all of the streets, Mariposa, Madrono, Castelaya. So what's your thinking along those lines?
Thank you, Mayor Holman. We definitely would go to the Parks and Rec Commission with the Park Boulevard, Bicycle Boulevard. So some of the improvements that you're referencing are a little bit to the south of this at Park Boulevard, for example. We act, that's a separate Bicycle Boulevard project of those two dozens that we're working on, and that's another concept plan that you will see in the spring. And so I think that is one of those projects that we would certainly want to take to the Parks and Rec Commission because it does go along the frontage of the park. And one of the options that we're considering for the Park Boulevard project is actually to extend and widen the park, you know, across that portion of Castelaya before it meets Park Boulevard. And so, you know, the PRC-provided input would be very pertinent.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that. A comment that Councilmember Burt made, I just want to support a lot because I'm probably more sensitive than he, coming from the graphics world, to a proliferation of signage. And I'll give you another example of wow, is actually at the Contra-directed Bicycle Lane on Homer at Alma. There's, I think, I've forgotten now, I've counted them a couple of times, but there's something like five signs, it seems like, within a very short distance. It, it's a lot. It's, it's overkill. I mean, it's way overkill. So take a look at that. I mean, people are sensitive to it. Not everybody is as sensitive, as sensitive as I am to it, but we do get comments about that sort of thing. So I want to support the earlier comments made in that regard. And then, is there any thought of any of this being on a trial basis, or these near-term improvements, are you thinking of them as being the final and permanent installations?
Thank you, Mayor Holman. I think any of these things that we've talked about, you know, as, as near-term improvements, like, say, the green bike lane on El Camino Way, I don't think there's reason why we can't consider it near the stuff trial. It's, it's just markings on the roadway. If we're not happy with it, it's a really simple thing to grind it off, you know, resurface the street, and then paint it some other way. You know, I don't, I wouldn't say put it back the way that it was, but it's, it's, you can try something, then try something different, we're not happy with it. And so that's something that if we wanted to tonight, you could make that point, and we could come back and report on the findings sometime later.
Okay, thank you for that. I had seen Councilmember Scharf's light, and then I also have Councilmember DeBois's light. Councilmember Scharf, were you wanting to make a motion, or did you just?
I was. I just wanted to make a motion.
Okay. Well, your light was on first, then, okay, please, go ahead.
So I'd just recommend that we approve the Maybell Avenue Bicycle Boulevard project and Churchill Avenue Enhanced Bike Way Concept Plan Lines and Implementation Plans as shown in Attachments A and B, and that we go ahead and do the near-term improvements on the Maybell Bicycle Boulevard and the Churchill Avenue Enhanced Bike Way, as well as an additional near-term improvement to facilitate access to the bike trail from the Alma, as we cross Alma from Churchill.
Second. Very good. Would you care to speak to your motion? And if the clerk could put it on the screen here too, so we can follow it.
Yeah, briefly, I think, I think staff did a really good job of putting this out. I think these are, these are both good plans. I was a little hesitant, frankly, on, on some of the time-of-day parking restrictions without, but what I've heard from staff is that they will reach out, and if for some reason that we get a lot of opposition to this, that staff will come back and they won't just implement it. And so I'm doing that with that understanding. And I also heard that if there are issues in terms of the sharos and that kind of stuff, we can, you know, fix it. So I think it's a good plan, and I think that we should go ahead, and I, I think we've put a lot of thought into this.
Councilmember Niss, would you care to speak to your second?
Thanks. I think you've summed it up very well, Councilmember Scharf. And also, Jaime, you've done a great job. You can talk twice as fast as any one of us, and so you accomplish a great deal.
Thank you.
I'm somewhat, I'm, I'm a little hesitant because I think that Bob Moss said something earlier about this being a pilot, but I cannot believe if after six months or eight months, this just just wasn't working, you wouldn't come back to us and say, this isn't working, or we're going to hear it from the public. But what I've heard is you've been very responsive to what the public has suggested. I think we're in a different era. Kids now drive so often. When my kids were at Pallie, there were lots of parking spots. Nobody ever worried about needing a parking spot because hardly, they didn't drive that much. So we're in such, you know, an era of the kids all biking, or sometimes driving, or whatever it may be. And I wonder if kids still walk to school. They must on occasion, right? So I think this takes us in a good direction, and you've been on stage now for quite a while tonight. So appreciate that, and appreciate Councilmember Scharf honing the motion, and I think we should go forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember DeBois?
Generally, in agreement. Glad somebody made a motion. I think you've heard a fair amount of concern though about El Camino Way, and I think that's, I guess, from what I've heard, that's probably the most controversial piece of it. And so I would like to ask my colleagues if anybody could propose maybe a friendly amendment that would capture the concerns along El Camino Way. I don't think we should narrow that road. And I'm really concerned about eliminating parking on that road. There's, like, I think, I think it was Bob Moss said, there's a lot of businesses, a lot of homes there. I don't know where those cars are going to go, and I think we're going to get some real pushback from the community on eliminating those parking restrictions, or eliminating parking on that street. So that's the only piece of it I feel uncomfortable with, and if anybody has a proposal, I'd love to hear it.
Councilmember DeBois, the near-term improvements on Slide 15 says time-of-day parking restrictions on Maybell Avenue with additional outreach to affected residents. Does that address your concern?
Well, specifically about El Camino Way.
I'm sorry, you said El Camino Way, yes. That's also, Seth?
I guess, if you do the outreach and you hear a lot of people are upset, what's the option?
Councilmember DeBois, just to clarify, and thank you for bringing up the point, we actually weren't proposing an immediate implementation of parking restrictions on El Camino Way. We were recommending to make the striping changes. I think after they go in, you know, we're working on the design, we can see if there's an interest in wanting to do some time-of-day restrictions on a trial basis, but as part of this motion, or to you, that we recommended, there was not a recommendation to remove the parking on El Camino Way.
Are you satisfied then?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember?
So I was just going to offer an amendment that we add sharrows on the Maybell project, that we add sharrows from, it looks like from, you know, about El Camino to Abel Avenue, or no, to Almaranta, it looks like, going west. I think that would be west or south, depending on, which is what had been brought up by Penny Ellison and the community as just creating, having sharrows on both sides of that street as opposed to just on one side, so that if bicyclists do spill out of the shared path, at least cars will know that they're meant to share the road as well.
Just to make a quick note, if I may, Councilmember Holman, I think Penny's intention is, and I'm starting to hear this, John, it would actually be all the way from El Camino Real to Donald, if we wanted to do the sharrows in both directions.
So it looks like it's already for a bunch, path from Almaranta to Donald, it looks like they're already being proposed? Or maybe I missed something?
That's if you do only the sharrows without that textured colored asphalt area for the pedestrians. If we do the, if we do the pathway, we weren't initially showing the sharrows, but to Penny's point, we can definitely add them back in.
I'm sorry, walk me through that one more time? I could just say yes, and that's what I want, but I might as well understand what I'm asking for.
If you were talking about wanting to do sharrows in both directions of Maybell, it wouldn't be just from El Camino Real to Almaranta, it would be all the way to Donald.
Oh, yeah, so I want both, I'm sorry, the piece that I'm saying is just adding in that small piece, because it looks like, yeah, so have double-sided, I mean, sharrows going both directions from El Camino to Donald, in addition to the shared pathway.
Councilmember Scharf, would you want to accept that or not?
I just wanted to make, you're good with that, Jaime? You don't have a problem with it? And that's Penny, that's what you meant? I mean, can I ask Penny? That's, just want to make sure that that's what she, okay, yeah, then I'm fine with it.
From ECR to Donald is the?
Since Penny nodded okay, I'll accept that.
Yeah, and it looks like it's captured here.
Okay, Councilmember Burt? You're speaking to the amendment?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Schmidt, did you want to speak to the amendment?
No.
Wasn't the amendment accepted? I'm sorry.
It was, you're exactly right. You're exactly right. So Councilmember Burt?
So I'm going to support the main motion. I just want to make one comment out of fairness to the success of our Bike to School program, including in the high schools, is that over the last 20 years, what we've had is a significant increase in the percentage of students who are biking, and a significant decrease in the percentage of students who are driving to school, and a significant increase in the number of students who are attending school by about, I don't know, 500. And that explains the parking situation at Pallie. It's not a shift in the mode. The shift in the mode has been in the positive direction, not to more kids driving. And I just want to make sure the community understands that.
Councilmember Schmidt?
In response to Councilmember DeBois's notion of El Camino Way, let me propose an amendment in line four after staff report, adding the words, giving special attention to options on El Camino Way.
I would second that.
Councilmember Scharf?
Yeah, that's fine.
Councilmember Niss? And? City Clerk, can you capture? Councilmember Schmidt, would you repeat that, please?
Yeah.
Microphone.
After staff report in line four, adding the words, giving special attention to options on El Camino Way.
And where are you adding that?
Just, Jaime, do you know what that means?
Can you be clear on where you're adding that?
I was interpreting it to mean that, you know, if we do move forward other options like the parking, that we really kind of take the considerations of what that impact might mean in a future phase.
That's how I read it. That's why I just wanted to make sure.
On line four, after staff report, add those words.
Attachments A and B needed staff report.
And that was accepted by both the maker and the secondor. So that's where it goes, right there. Okay. Councilmember DeBois?
With respect to Councilmember Berman, I actually want to offer an amendment to strike the adding the sharrows in both directions. I think we got letters from the community concerned about the number of sharrows. I would rather, I'd be more comfortable leaving in Jaime's hands to do the outreach and make the decision rather than us specifying that specifically what the implementation should be. So my amendment would be just to strike that line and leave it as part of the implementation.
My understanding of that was that by adding the sharrows, we're doing the outreach just like we're doing the parking, and that if it comes back negative, we wouldn't do it, or we'd come back to council. That was my understanding on the outreach, but maybe that wasn't everyone else's understanding.
It just seems a little overly specific to me that we want to specify that.
Jaime, would you care to?
I just had to provide some thoughts on that, Councilmember Holman, I'm sorry, Mayor Holman. The near-term options that we're recommending for Maybell, it wouldn't include the sharrows today. I think that we definitely need some more opportunities to meet with the community, kind of build some confidence in the use of those tools on that street. So I think we have a lot of time between now and the time we finalize design to bring that issue up with the community. So if you don't want to discuss it tonight, or if you do want to, you know, we'll do what the community is really showing that they want. So if they don't want it by the time we wrap up the design, we'll definitely let you know, Councilmember Holman, Councilmember Berman, we can take them out at that time.
So would you accept the word consideration, add consideration for sharrows going both directions?
I would. I think what just add consideration is good.
Fine.
Whatever.
Add consideration of sharrows going both directions. And it disappeared. And Jaime, do you want or need language that talks about community outreach? Would that help you?
Yeah, I think it's fine the way it is because this is the design phase.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Wobach, and then Councilmember Philsith.
Actually, I'll skip my comments. I was going to help bridge the gap, they took care of it on their own.
Councilmember Philsith?
Me too, I was going to suggest what Tom had said. Okay, all right. So I see no more lights. So the motion we are about to vote on is to approve the Maybell Avenue Bicycle Boulevard project and Churchill Avenue Enhanced Bike Way Concept Plan Lines and Implementation Plans as shown on Attachments A and B of the staff report, of this evening's report, giving special attention to options on El Camino Way, and that we go ahead and do the near-term improvements to Churchill Avenue, and near-term improvements to Maybell Avenue, and additional near-term improvements to facilitate access to the bike trail from Churchill as you cross Alma. And we are adding consideration for sharrows going both directions on Maybell from El Camino Real to Donald. And for the record, the near-term improvements are identified in the staff presentation, Slide 15, and if that can be put somewhere online too, so people can access that, that would be really helpful. Okay, so we should vote on the board? And that passes unanimously, congratulations, Jaime. I guess we should say congratulations to the biking community as well. Okay, so that takes us to?
Nine.
Yes, number nine, which is adoption of procedure to vote on holding closed sessions. And there is no staff presentation on this item, and I believe, I believe this was something that Councilmember Scharf had initiated. So would you care to speak to this? And let's give just a moment here for the chambers to get quiet. Do we have members of the public to speak to this? Okay.
Daniel, I think you win. You're still here.
So why don't you go ahead and make your comments first, and then we'll hear from Herb Borach, who's the only person who submitted a card to this point. And if members of the public could carry the conversation out in the lobby, that would be great. Thank you.
Well, I think this is an easy, an easy change. What typically happens is we don't necessarily have the opportunity to think about what we're, why we're going into closed session, and what this simply does is allow us to have that contemplative moment where we all sit together and decide, do we actually want to go into closed session? And so there's some thought. It doesn't do us much good if we're already in closed session and someone raises it, it seems a little too late at that point. The other thing that I've noticed that happens is a lot of people will stay in the room back there, eating, while five council members will come out and just give the appearance, and then we move right into closed session. So this way, everyone actually comes down, we sit down, we have, you know, takes an extra three or four minutes probably maximum, and I think we should go ahead and do this. And when we were at Policy and Services, as you know, it was split between Greg Schmidt and myself supported this, and Councilmembers Klein and Price did not, and that's why there's no, no recommendation.
With that background, we'd like to hear from Herb Borach, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Holman. I agree with Councilmember Scharf's proposal, and I appreciate him bringing the issue before the council. Currently, you do have an opportunity, I voted the council, to decide not to go into closed session. So what this proposal, if adopted, would do, would change what a tie vote would mean. That is, currently, you would automatically be going into closed session, so if someone made a motion not to go into closed session, and there was a tie vote, it would fail. Whereas this would turn it around and say that you would need a positive vote, a majority vote, to go into closed session. This is something that came before, you know, a committee at one point on the Cubberly issue, but it's also an outgrowth of the grand jury report. And this doesn't deal with the issue of land sale, which is coming before you tentatively in three weeks. And on both these issues, that is, tonight's agenda item and that future agenda item, it's important to take the position that you're looking upon how you're going to operate in the future, rather than going back and either criticizing or defending what a prior action had been. There are a couple of reasons why you may want to have a discussion and possibly delay on going into closed session. One is that you sometimes would like to have an objective staff report on the history or explanation of something that would be available not just to the council when it's in closed session, but to the public, so the public can advise the council. For example, on land issues, we have histories of staff reports and minutes and council actions on various parcels, and it seems that's not something that should just be private in closed session, but it should be available when it seems to be appropriate, so that the public can be informed and give the council its opinion about what or whether you should go into closed session. The other example I can think of is on litigation. For example, on high-speed rail, when the court makes an adverse decision, a contract lawyer tends to issue a press release with propaganda, rather than giving a clear statement of the court's reasoning for making its decision. And I believe something like that, it would be helpful for the public to have that before them, so the public can give an opinion as to whether or not you should be going into closed session, and if you do, what kinds of action or non-action you should be considering. A similar thing also happened on high-speed rail when you didn't participate in the first EIR process for Caltrain, for high-speed rail, excuse me, and therefore you couldn't be a plaintiff, and there was a question of whether you should be a friend of the court. But you didn't have before you in public what the standards were for participating as a friend of the court, and I thought that that would have been helpful to inform the public. Thank you.
And thank you. Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Schmidt?
Yeah, I'm in favor of this, because I think it, the difference is, is it makes each council member take a public position, that it is appropriate that he or she has enough information to go into a closed session, and feels comfortable with it, and bears then the responsibility for whatever takes place. I think council members have pointed out that in their experience, there are probably four items where there was some question raised by at least one council member about going into closed session. One was on Cubberly negotiations, one was on city manager interviews, one was on the 7.7 acres, and one was the recent one on non-representation negotiations. So I think 98% of the closed sessions we go into would be pro forma, yes, let's go. It's clear, it's clear to me, it's clear to the public why we're doing it. If there is an issue, like one of the four that comes up where a council member is not certain of what's going on, or wants to make it public, has the right to say, let's have a vote. I think it would be good if it went along with a mayor prerogative that no one would speak more than one minute and on the issue, so that it would not take time, it wouldn't be a burden on the calendar. But it does give that responsibility for council members to say publicly, yes, let's go.
Councilmember Niss?
I don't want to steal your thunder, Councilmember Scharf, but I'm not quite sure why you didn't make a motion on this, and I'd be glad to do it, but.
Go ahead. I didn't make a motion because Mayor Holman had not gone out to the public yet.
In that case, I would make a motion that we, indeed, In that case, I would make a motion that we indeed vote on closed session before we retry our, into closed session. And if this is second, I'll continue.
Second.
So I, I think it's actually a very good idea. I understand other councils do this. But I want to make one thing absolutely clear tonight, and I think Councilmember Berman will join me on this. We have been quoted so often as being part of the grand jury report that reported on John Ariaga. Mark and I, to my knowledge, have not voted on something to do with John Ariaga. And I'd like to say it at least once in public, we weren't involved. If we'd been sitting here, we might have been, but we weren't. So with that, I would urge you to vote for this.
Councilmember Scharf, a second.
I feel like I spoke into this.
Councilmember Burt.
Yeah, I'll just say that I think this is a good proposal. It's going to cause us to just be thoughtful and affirmative every time that we go into closed session. I expect it will mean a few fewer closed sessions. It will actually have an impact, not a radical one, but one that will be healthy and constructive.
I don't see any other lights.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I just might say one thing real quick, limit the staff report to one point, and that is, this would be an improvement in current practice, in our view, right? And I think another advance in our city's focus on open government. Our research showed there was only one other jurisdiction in the region, and all that was doing this was the city of San Francisco. So we'd be joining San Francisco in this, this approach. Thanks.
So I have just one question, which is, I don't know why exactly this might happen, but you never know. In the case where something is quite timely, would both the agenda item to vote on whether to go to closed session and the closed session both be on the same agenda?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay.
So just under the, the closed session agenda item, it'll say, vote to go into closed session. And I'm sure it'll take you just, you know, one try to adopt the routine of, do I have a motion to go into closed session? And as Councilmember Schmidt said, normally that will occur and be accomplished with no comments in less than a minute.
I would just clarify, Madam Mayor, I would presume that the majority of the times it will be on the same, at the same meeting.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Seeing no other lights, the motion on the board is to amend our procedures to require the council vote before going into closed sessions. And that passes unanimously. Congratulations. So we now go to item number 10. This item is a policy and services recommendation to adopt an ordinance increasing council salaries from $600 a month to $1,000 a month effective January 1st, 2017. And Councilmember Niss, this was something that you had brought up. There is no staff presentation, but you had brought this up earlier on. So would you care to speak to this? And I have no cards from members of the public.
Thank you. I think we may have first broached this two years ago, as I recall, back on policy, although it's, it's been some time. So there are several things that I would like to say about this. The first thing is, if you look on page one of your packet on, on this item, you'll notice that 15, nearly 15 years has passed since this council has been willing to give itself a raise. I, I don't know why. I wasn't here for most of those 15 years, except for two. And I don't know what the hesitancy was. And I, I wouldn't even opine on that. But to, to say a couple of things about, about this, and then I also want to ask Kathy Shin to make a, a correction. But I admire all of you here who ran for council. I know that anyone who takes this job on has taken on an enormous amount of community service, for which you will be compensated very little. But I'm worried that right now, the public believes that in order to serve on this council, you either need to be retired, wealthy, self-employed, or single.
Or stupid.
Pardon? Or what?
Stupid.
Or stupid. That's, I didn't add that one. What I've noticed is that the amount of time that one needs to do this has really, has, I think, resulted in a number of council members who resigned. And I will name some of them. I know that Yahweh resigned when he was going to be mayor. Gail Price resigned while she was on, Nancy Shepard. And Karen, I think you actually did as well, because you had a full-time job before you came on the council. The council takes a lot of time. But there's a very glaring absence, if you look down the row here, and I am looking down the entire row. And I don't see, other than Karen and I, who have both had careers, I don't see another woman sitting here, nor have I talked to any women. And I struggled with that last summer. I tried to find a woman who was in mid-years, still had kids, willing to run for office. Each person said, I cannot spend that amount of time. I have kids, and it's costly to do that. So if you need to get a sitter during the day, by the way, so I'm going to, going to look at one of you. You both have kids down here. Ask Molly. You probably know you cannot get a sitter for less than $20 to $25 an hour if you're going to get someone to come in. Both my daughters have kids. They, without question, in this area, that is what you are going to pay. In fact, I think you're probably lucky if you can find somebody for $20 an hour. That would mean, if you were willing to go from $600 to $1,000 a month, you would actually be able, by my math here, you would actually be able to get that person an extra, looks like about an extra six, maybe 10 hours of childcare a week. All of us have some daytime assignment that, that we do for this council, every one of us. There are very few weeks that I can't quantify that I have spent 25 to 30 hours on this job. And eventually, you just spend all your time on it. You don't, you know, it's, it's just part of your life after a while. But for, for women in particular, and I'm singling women out because I know how difficult it was when I tried to find a woman to run, but also because I'm looking down the row, and aside from Karen, I'm not seeing any other women here. And that, that really does trouble me. Women do make up 51, 52% of the population. And the number of women shrinking in public office on the peninsula is, is of such alarm that there are two or three organizations that are now addressing it. So I know it's very difficult for one to give themselves a raise. It's the kind of thing we somehow just stay away from, like, like, you know, like a, like a hot flame. And yet, I would urge you to think about this carefully tonight before you vote. And I'm, I'm going to tell you what a couple of other areas are spending on this. And also, Kathy, would you, before I go through some of those salaries, would you mention what happened in Mountain View?
So Mountain View did go from $600 to $1,000 a month at this last election in November.
Right. And because they are not, as I, they're a general law city, correct? Are they charter?
They're a charter city.
Well, then this is something we could have voted on as well. And I'm going to guess, Molly?
Oh, absolutely. The council could have put this on the ballot, and that was a question that, that I believe the committee looked at.
Uh huh.
And decided instead to explore avenues for doing the increase through an ordinance.
I talked to one of the council members last night, and I, and my understanding is it passed easily in Mountain View, which was interesting. So looking at other cities, and you've, you've got the chart in front of you, but as I see it, Cupertino runs at 730, Milpitas 861, Epic City's with a similar population, Mountain View now at 1,000, Redwood City at 750, Santa Monica, I didn't do it monthly, but it's, it's 28 yearly. And then, because I knew that Councilmember Wallback would want to know, Boulder pays themselves $186 per meeting, however that comes out. And apparently, they meet four to five times a month. So I, I really think that as we go forward with this, I would like you very much to think about the group of people we are not attracting to run for this office. And I would also suggest that if this doesn't get the votes that it needs to pass tonight, that we think very seriously about putting it on in 2016. So with that, I would like to move approval of our current salary from $600 to $1,000 per month. And that would start in, I, I think I'm correct, Kathy, January 1st of 2017, right?
That's correct.
So it would be, it doesn't go into effect for those of you who are sitting here. You probably will never get the benefit of it, but it does mean that when somebody thinks of running in 2016, they may think, you know, I think maybe I could swing it at $1,000 a month instead of 600. So that's my motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Niss, second by Councilmember Burt. Have you spoken to the motion?
I think I have spoken to it quite, quite, quite at length.
Councilmember Burt.
Well, I'll add that I think this is a modest step to democratize further city council participation. It's not a big step, but it moves in that direction. I observed in the, over the last year, as there were discussions on possible increases in council salaries, it was really by principally being advocated by people who are, were on the grassroots side of the political discussion at the time. I'll also add that this would occur in 2017, so would coincide with the council size reduction and proportionally greater workload by the seven council members than the nine. I will state a different position in terms of the impact of this on gender issue. I think this will have virtually no impact on gender participation in the council, and it's not about promoting gender participation, greater gender equity, which I think is something that we very much should do, but I just don't think this has diddly to do with it. I think the better thing to do is to actually support women candidates when they run. So we may have had different positions on that in the last election. But nevertheless, for slightly different reasons, I support the motion.
Councilmember Wobach.
So just to clarify, the council size reduction will go into effect in 2019, not in 2017. And so a number of us would have this impact us after 2017. This would be an increase in our own salaries for, for several of us. This last fall, I was asked in a public forum if I would support full-time pay for city council members. In a conservative estimate, council members work about 25 hours a week. You work that out. We're looking at it with $1,000 a month, this being approximately minimum wage. It's full-time pay, not, you know, by normal, but what we think of as palatable standards, but what a lot of people make in our community. So this is full-time pay. When I was asked last fall if I support full-time pay for city council members, I said, no, I don't, unless Measure D passes. I didn't expect Measure, Measure D to pass, but it did. I was in favor of maintaining the larger council size rather than a reduction. I do see that with the reduction in the council size, that does mean more work for all council members, because it's more work serving on liaisons to community groups and regional boards and bodies. And that's more work to spread around a smaller group of people. So I think it increases the demand, and I think it's appropriate to have an increase in salary coincide with that. So with that in mind, I would actually offer a friendly amendment to change the implementation date to 2019 rather than 2017.
I, I think that's commendable, Corey, but I'd like to see first whether or not we can do it slightly sooner, because I'd like to offer that in, to anyone who's interested in running in 2016, to say, just as you did, you know, we could offer you a job at minimum wage. Which minimum wage were you thinking? I mean, are you thinking of the new minimum wage or the, or the, the US minimum wage? Are you thinking of US, or are you thinking of the county?
I, I'm thinking at, you know, our minimum wage is, you know, around $10 an hour, so this is approximately, but we're guestimating, because of course, council hours per week is variable.
So, so just so we're on the same page, though, about $10 an hour is what you think we're worth? Am I right?
It is public service.
Vice Mayor Schmidt.
Yeah, I'm supporting the motion. It's, it will be 16 years between the last salary increase and this one. Under state guidelines, cost of living increase is an acceptable procedure. And I think the impact on the community, as an economist, I look at, you know, this increase is not a full-time salary, but what it does is it changes incentives. And I would assume, as an economist, that there would be a marginal increase in the number of moderate-income people who might consider the job with a slightly higher wage than before. And increasing the pool of candidates is always a healthy thing in a democracy. So I support the increase.
Councilmember Scharf.
So I won't be supporting the increase. So I actually think this is sort of funny. When we first got on council, at least in 2010, I remember, I don't remember which council member, but there was a proposal at that point to reduce the council salary by 25%. I don't know if you remember, I think Councilmember Holman remembers, or Mayor Holman remembers that. And, and the reason was this, and I said, this is ridiculous. And I voted against it. But it failed on a 5-4 vote. And the reason it failed on a 5-4 vote was frankly because, you know, five of us said no, and four wanted to do it. And it was that close. So I think one of the things we're thinking about in, in that is that it was symbolic. That was the whole point of the, is everyone said, we're in a recession, you know, council needs to share the pain, our employees are taking big cuts, and all of that. And so, yes, I think council salary is somewhat symbolic. Where I'm going with this is, because it's symbolic, now that we're in the up months, we, up years, we get a lot of pressure to raise wages for our employees. Everyone comes in and wants 5, 10% raises and that. And council's going to sit here and raise their salary, you know, 50, 40%. And it just seems to me that we then also have our hand out. And I, I think it's hard to have the moral high ground and say to our employees, no, we're not going to give a 5% raise, 10% raise. You know, we're going to hold the line on fiscal responsibility, when, as soon as things get good, what does council do? Council says, pay us more money. And I don't for a minute believe what Councilmember Niss said, that this is going to increase gender running. I think it's just, no one's going to run for, because they're being paid...
That's because you're a guy, Greg.
No, I don't think so, Liz. I, I really don't. I, I think that's actually somewhat demeaning to, to men. I think that people across the board, when they look at this stuff, the reason they run for council is not for the money. They run for council because it's public service, and that's why they're doing it. And I think it's really hard, and yes, you could construct the minority, you know, once in a, you know, once in a while, perfect opportunity where the one person who would not be able to do their council service, because they're a single mom or a single dad, frankly, who needs the babysitting and otherwise couldn't afford it. But that is a really rare instance. And given the symbolism of raising our council salaries, as soon as the economy gets better, I think that outweighs it, and that we shouldn't do it.
Councilmember Filtheth.
So, so I agree with Councilmember Scharf on the, on the cosmetics and the symbolism of this. My inclination, although I'm going to continue to listen to the discussion, is not to support the motion. I believe... I believe very strongly with Councilmember Niss that the limitation of the current compensation structure for council limits the pool size of candidates who can come up here and do this. And that is a significant problem. However, I think from going from $600 a month to $1,000 a month is not likely to make a significant difference in that pool size. I think the discussion of a much larger change, right, is a, that really would increase the pool size, is a legitimate discussion. But that's not what's on the table tonight. The second reason is all of us get health care from the city on the public health care plan, CalPERS plan. And different ones of us use different amounts of it and so forth. But the cost of health care and the premiums of health care have risen dramatically faster than inflation over the last couple of decades. And so, you know, that is a raise. And so, to say that we or other public employees have not got a raise in that time, I don't believe that's correct. And so, my inclination is not to support the motion. I have one other observation, which is I think, you know, the staff did a comprehensive job comparing the compensation to the council to compensation of councils of other cities. In a perfect world, and I think this probably is not possible for the council case, and I don't want anybody to go out and do this, but in a perfect world, I would have loved to see a comparison of our compensation beyond just the bounds of the public sector. Okay, thanks very much.
Councilmember Berman?
So, I think we see by the number of members of the public who are still here, how much folks in the community kind of care about this issue. I want to give a shout out to the Boy Scout who's still here. I'm really impressed or worried, I don't know. We're past 10 o'clock now. But it's, and this isn't an issue that I really care about either. You know, I'm going to support the motion. I'm going to do it because, you know, I think raising council salary to minimum wage, which is essentially what we're doing, makes sense. I mean, you know, I think we all work hard. I mean, from a symbolic standpoint, I think it makes sense to, you know, for everybody who works in Palo Alto to be making minimum wage, including the city council. And, you know, we don't get paid by the hour, but I'd say our hours do average out to 20, 25 hours a week by 100 hours a month. So, this would be about minimum wage. You know, I think Councilmember Philseth is right that this doesn't, you know, that much bigger measures could be taken to make it easier for more people in the community to run. But I will say personally, this doesn't hurt. I mean, it's not a step in the wrong direction. I think it's a step in the right direction. And so, for that reason, I'm comfortable supporting it. To Councilmember Scharf's comments about our labor groups, if any labor group comes to us and says they want to get paid minimum wage like the city council, sign on the dotted line, done. I don't think there's going to be any opposition on the dais. So, you know, it's, I'm pretty ambivalent about this whole issue, but I think it's better than it is worse. And so, I'll be supporting it.
Councilmember DeBois?
So, I came into this really wanting to hear the opinions of my colleagues. And, you know, I have to say, after listening to everybody, I largely agree with Councilmember Scharf and Philseth. I think the optics are not great. Again, maybe the public doesn't care, but we have a reporter and a Boy Scout. And like, vote ourselves a huge raise percentage-wise, not in absolute terms, but I just don't really think it's a good idea. I do think the symbolism is bad, that I think the reason we all do this is community service. And like Councilmember Philseth said, the change from 600 to 1,000, you know, maybe there's some very marginal change, but I think it's pretty minor. So, I will not be supporting the motion.
Councilmember Walbach, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Yeah, I don't want to rehash what I said before too much. But again, I was on record before the election saying that I would support this in this situation. So, yeah, I am supportive of this. I'm going to stick by what I said during the campaign. But I would like to hear from some of those others who are supportive of this motion, what's the logic behind this timing? What's the logic behind waiting two years? Why not have it go into effect next year or next month? Or wait until 2019, when there's been a real turnover in the council? So that we're not voting for our own pay to raise? We're not, this isn't about us, this is about the future councils. So, again, what's the real logic for 2017?
Madam Mayor, may I make one comment on that, on that point? So, through the chair, Councilmember Walbach, partly, the timing is a legal issue. There needs to be some council members stand for election or reelection between the time that the proposal is made and the time that it goes into effect. You could obviously extend the time further, but this is the actually earliest time.
Thank you.
So, I will speak to the motion. And I've been supportive of some kind of increase for some time because, a lot of because of what Councilwoman Niss said earlier. I think a lot of us have been out in the community talking to people about running for council. And, you know, you never know what's going to make the difference for somebody. If it's $100 or if it's $600 or, you know, $1,000, whatever. But it can make a difference. And one of the things that is so important to me is that we do what we can and what is feasible and reasonable to make sure that the council is a diverse body. And this, I think, is a step in that direction. It's not a lot of money. It's like, if you look at our pay stubs now, I think the hourly rate in our pay stub is $3.49 an hour, I think is what it is. Kathy Shin is nodding her head up and down. I'm sorry? Yeah. That's hardly high pay. Before the campaign even started, there were people out there talking about, in the community, and where are they tonight, I don't know. Maybe because they don't consider this anything that is significant enough to garner their attention and their attendance. But there were a lot of people out there asking questions, as Councilmember Walbach has mentioned. You know, shouldn't the council be a full-time paid position? I don't support that. It is public service, it's community service, but it shouldn't be a hardship. And so, if this will encourage some people to participate and retain and maintain and encourage any level of diversity on the council, I support that. Aside from full-time compensation, other people were talking about, you know, raising compensation certainly considerably more than what's being presented and proposed tonight. Which, by the way, I would suggest that anyone who doesn't want to accept the compensation can turn it back to the city. So, it's not a requirement to take it. So, there is that. But people were talking about, you know, $2,000, $2,500 a month, those sorts of numbers. So, maybe that's why people aren't here tonight. Because they're thinking if we're going to do something, they want to work for something that's more meaningful and would, that much further embellish or encourage a diverse council. So, Councilwoman Niss and I agree quite a bit on this about the diversity in allowing people to participate. So, I did have one question, which is, and this won't affect me, but I didn't see in the ordinance, and is it elsewhere that the mayor and vice mayor compensation is addressed? Because I didn't see it addressed here. Is it being any different than the $1,000 council member compensation?
Yes, yes, we did look at this. And we are recommending a cleanup on that item because it currently lives in two different places in the code. And the process is, remind me, Director Shin, we talked about this this afternoon.
So, there's a city council protocol document that lists the additional dollars for mayor and vice mayor. And that amount was different than what it was in the ordinance, actually. So, what we've said we'll do is not mention the amount in the ordinance, but just do it by resolution.
That's correct. So that, I'm sorry. So, the ordinance that's before you, it eliminates the contradictory language, which has not been the city's practice. And then, it provides that the stipend, which is a, it's really a cost reimbursement stipend, is going to be determined by resolution. And that's done through this travel and reimbursement policy.
And that would be a separate action? That's not before you tonight as far as making any changes in the mayor, vice mayor salary?
Currently, it's $150 for the mayor, $100 for the vice mayor per month.
So, thank you for that clarification. And just to be perfectly clear, that would not affect the current mayor. So, with that, the motion on the board is, or the motion before us, is to adopt an ordinance that would increase council salaries effective January 1st, 2017, from $600 a month to $1,000 a month. Voting on the board, please? And that motion passes on a vote of 6 to 3 with Councilmembers Scharf, Philseth, and DeBois voting no. So, are there any council member comments or staff comments? Any closing comments? Councilwoman DeBois?
Yeah, Councilmember Philseth and I were at a League of Cities event last week for newly-elected council members. We got our annual ethics training out of the way, which was nice, and ramped up on a lot of governance issues. And probably the best thing, as you guys probably know, is the networking. We met a lot of Bay Area council members, Mountain View, Atherton, Los Altos, as well as, you know, all over the Bay. And during the social media session, they used Palo Alto several times as examples of good communication. So, that was nice to see. Showed our website and Facebook postings and things. And just so we can feel better about our meetings, just talking to the council member from Santa Cruz, they had a 10-hour meeting last week. They had over 200 speakers for public comment because they accepted some military gear for their police force. So, could be worse. And let's not accept an armored vehicle without discussing it, please.
Councilmember Niss?
So, apropos of what Councilmember DeBois is talking about, DeBois. I like DeBois better. So, I have joined the Employee Relations Committee of the League. And we discuss such exciting things, as you know, as Pepper and Purb and all that kind of thing. So, if you're interested in something about employee relations, that's a committee I'll be serving on this year. And I think that's it. I think I might, on a different topic, though, just mention, most of you know that I'm on the airboard and have been for quite a while. We have had a stretch of Spare the Air days that is absolutely incredible. No particular reason given. I talked to Jack Broadbent at another event last week. And it simply is where we are in the current airstream at this point. But for all of you who have been willing to go along with that and not use fireplaces and so forth, that airboard certainly appreciates it. There is, however, which many of you may know, there are places in, because this is the nine Bay Area counties, there are areas where burning wood is absolutely their source of heat. And that has become a major issue, especially in West Marin. So, should you read about it? It's something we discuss extensively. And that's my report.
Thank you both. Councilmember Burt?
Yes, I was able to attend the senior summit that was led by our staff and the Human Relations Commission and chaired by HRC Chair Jill Onan last Thursday. And it was really a very productive and impressive summit, pulling together representatives from a wide range of agencies that support and deal with seniors in both Palo Alto and surrounding communities. And I think that out of this, there's going to be even stronger collaboration and looking for ways to have synergies and maybe an ongoing senior advisory council that might emerge from it. So, it was a really productive affair. And the HRC and Chair Onan, who did just a superb job of facilitating a very large meeting for several hours, they're really to be commended.
I have two things real quickly. One is just a quick follow-up to the HRC event involving seniors and their issues. I attended part of that meeting after Councilmember Burt had to leave and would just concur with his comments about what a well-run event it was. And spectacular attendance, they had to spread out into another room. Also, I attended the YCS Youth Community Services event yesterday on King Plaza in honor of Martin Luther King Day of Service event. And it was very well-attended. The youth just did a great job. There were speakers, history presentations, volunteer opportunities. The mayor of East Palo Alto and I both spoke. And it was just a great event and just another expression of how our youth performs in this community. And we're going to be looking this year to be highlighting more volunteer opportunities and days in the community this year, including the Make a Difference Day in October. So, with that, Daniel, thank you for coming tonight and for staying with us. So, good night.